Last month, we remembered, Austin, on Alaway, like Lisa. Well, continues to run, and I assume all of you that's seen your board. We had two members who are on. Well, we have one who did nothing good with us at work, and one is on the mainland. Just on our agenda, we have the Honolulu Fire. We've walked through the one that was serving up, sorry. This is for our month of September, we had three, double five, two, six fires. Fourteen activated on, on your own, you know, for three or three four crash activity, but I want to do the best we can on one side of the. So inspire sleeping, doing stuff, and games around the month of October, something that didn't keep starting. So the cooking fires have been supposed to be on fire, the fire between the.
Uh, what can you do? How can you help? Turn the back of the stove, always keep a lid nearby when cooking. If a small grease fire starts, slide the lid over the pan and turn off the burner. Watch what you heat, set a timer to remind you that you are cooking. Have a kid and pet zone, free zone, about at least three feet around the stove and areas where hot food or drink is prepared or carrying. We have any questions?
Questions for the Honolulu Fire Department. Uh, there, there was a fire on, they would pronounce, we know, road. It's one of the two, I think, you mentioned, and it just happened to be right outside my window, and I was just curious what the cause of that fire was.
Actually, I'm not familiar with that fire. Um, I have a, uh, if you want to email, they can give you specific statistics on that.
Okay, well, one thing I want to do is compliment the fire department, how quick they were there, how quick they got it out.
Excellent.
They did an excellent job.
They better. Anyone else?
Any other questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Seeing none, thank you very much for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next, we have the Honolulu Police Department, and I messed up on the next line on there where it says, "Presentation on Vehicle Noise." Uh, that report was not ready for tonight. So go ahead, sir.
Say good evening, I'm Lieutenant Komodo from the District Six Waikiki. I'll be reading you the stats for the month of September. Uh, robberies, we had two burglaries, eleven. Theft cases, which includes purse snatching, shoplifting, et cetera, hundred sixty-eight. Unlawful entry to motor vehicle is fourteen. Thirty-one assault cases, two sex crimes. Bike and skateboard violations, we had twenty-one. Two hundred thirty-nine citations for speeding. One thousand nine hundred eight citations for parking. One for loud muffler. Eighty-two citations for park closures and eight arrests. Total calls for service for the month of September was four thousand seven hundred seven.
Questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Sir?
I have a question. I had a client the other day that asked me, on Alaway, is there, how big of a problem is like, smash a window, grab something out of a car and go? Is that something to worry about if you live on Alaway? I had a client ask me about like a smash and grab, how often it happens on Alaway with the cars there? Do those get broken into more frequently than like Kohio?
I wouldn't say Alaway would be more frequent, it's just one of the more heavily traveled roads. It would, if it were to happen, I would guess it would be one more, one of the side streets.
Okay, that was the question.
Fully random, though.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes?
Hi, hi, um, I was actually wondering, I've heard you guys have so many great programs, like the Citizen Patrol? Are you guys affiliated with that program at all, or, um?
Yeah, I believe they actually have to go through a, like, an academy.
Oh, oh, sure. Oh, no, it's actually, um, the Waikiki, they have, for the different sub-districts, like Eaton, they meet at Eaton Square, on Thursdays at six P M. And they, you walk with H P D officers around your neighborhood and you can.
Well, they have neighborhood security watches, and our community policing team will actually meet with them, and they'll walk around the neighborhoods and whatnot. But they also do have that Citizens Patrol program.
Yeah, I was wondering too, and you also have these other great programs, like this Safe and Sound, and you also had another program where, um, they're teaching people how to, like, information on setting up a neighborhood watch. Um, is it possible, um, when you come on the meetings, because you have so many great programs, is it possible to share those also?
You can actually just go to the HonoluluP D dot org, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, but you guys are so great.
Or I can put you in touch with our community policing team.
Okay, then maybe I can.
Because they're, they're the ones that would basically be dealing with all the outreach programs.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that our neighborhood knows about these programs, because they're so great, so I was trying to think of how to, um, get the word out, so.
I'm scheduled to talk to, uh, community policing this month, so I'll ask them to do a presentation. They'll be doing a Christmas party for Jefferson Elementary students that, uh, otherwise would not get a Christmas present, so I'll be seeing them to, uh, contribute to that, so, anyway. Okay, any other? John?
Uh, John Deuceman from Waikiki. Uh, I keep an eye on my area, I call Area Six Six Six, which is from the, uh, Waikiki Wall to the substation from the ocean to Kohio. Big development, uh, last four weeks, which is a positive development. We've had, uh, a hundred and ninety percent increase in felony cases that have been made by the police and have been filed by the prosecutor's office. The average used to be two point seven five, we're up to eight, it's like a hundred and ninety percent increase. And for those of you in the room, when somebody gets nailed with a felony and it sticks through Steve Arm's office, they are off the street for at least a year, sometimes five years. So if we can keep going at that momentum, I mean, get rid of eight bad actors in my little area, that's huge. So congratulations to you guys. I have to acknowledge too, Jordan Show, the super cop in my area is here. We, I keep insisting that we scientifically clone him in the laboratory, and all our problems will be over. Thanks, guys.
You have any other questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Tim?
Good evening, um. Good evening, um, thanks for everything you guys do. Huge difference. I had a conversation with the mayor about safe and sound, where we were. Man, I'm so compliment you guys, you've really followed through. Now I got another problem. They just put new meters in the whole city, right? And I was on Ahua when the vendor from San Diego was putting in the new meters. And I was with one of our parking enforcement guys, and I asked him specifically if these meters were tamper-proof. And they told me, yes, they're tamper-proof. And then I watched everybody, not everybody, that's overstating. A lot of people, they go on YouTube. You take a dime, you put a paperclip on it, and you go like this, and you get free parking. Last time I looked, that was stealing. And first of all, they lied to me, saying it was tamper-proof. So it's going on everywhere, all the kids, especially Ahua. If you could put undercover cop out there and watch it, you would pick up twenty-five people a day, stealing money from the city and county, and parking there all day while they work in Waikiki. So I know it would be intensive to catch somebody, but I catch them every day, sitting in my car, drinking my coffee. Just thought I'd bring it up. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Let me call you up to talk today, because of the speaker being on this side, I'd like everybody to use the mic on this side of the, the room. Any other questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Seeing none, thank you very much for being with us, I know you're already off duty. Uh, Dominic, how's Board of Water Supply doing?
Uh, good evening, Dominic, this is with the Honolulu Board of Water Supply, not much to report, uh, no main breaks last month, no current construction activities. Uh, once again, I'll say it every time I come up here, please conserve water, be mindful of how you use it. Look out for breaks, broken sprinklers, all the Board of Water Supply reported, so we can contact the association, if it's a condo or an apartment or the business, if it's a commercial entity, those sprinklers can really waste a lot of water when they break. Um, on October twenty-first, the Board of Water Supply is observing Imagine a Day Without Water, uh, not a great thought, but something we all need to think about. City, state, community organizations will be setting up, uh, booths with interactive activities. There's going to be ziriski activities, fishing, uh, they're going to be making genki balls, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, they use them in the Alaway. These are used to clean up water and soils, so there'd be activities related to that. Again, this is Saturday, October twenty-first, from ten A M. to two P M. at the Freshwater Recreation Area in Waihewa. So if you haven't seen the island lately, it's a good chance to get out there and, uh, for more information, you can always visit our website, BoardofWaterSupply dot com slash one Water Hawaii, and I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Could you send me a copy of that, so we can send it to all?
Yeah, I, I gave, uh, yes, Judy a copy, so.
Okay.
If she can distribute that.
That will be sent out to all board members. Any questions for Board of Water Supply? Tim?
Hi, Dominic, um, I've missed a couple of meetings, and so tonight, good fortune, I see that the roadway is being repaired on Kohio after that major break we had in February. And I don't know if that's your responsibility, or if it passes to other departments, but now we're getting a new concrete panel, a new curb, maybe a new tree.
Yep.
Yeah.
So normally, normally if there's a break, you know, if there's a water main break and it causes a, uh, break in the road, our crews will go out there and their immediate responsibility is to restore service. So we will respond to a break and do whatever we have to do to restore service to all the customers, and we will expedite that effort. And then normally, depending on the severity of the break, we provide like a temporary patch, our crews are not really outfitted. The same crews that fix the main break are not really outfitted to do a final adjustment, final pavement of a roadway. And so we actually have a contract with a company that goes out and follows up on a schedule and does the final repaving of the roads. So sometimes it does take a while, you know, depending on the, you know, no main breaks this month, but we have main breaks almost daily, so those groups are busy, you know, chasing down repairs and making necessary fixes, so, yeah.
Tim?
I was watching what happened in Maui, and there's a lot of issues with water, same with this island, with Red Hill. And I have talked to some of our city leaders, and I talked to Senator Moreauke. We're surrounded by water, we got water coming everywhere, two thousand miles everywhere. And so I've asked all these leaders, why don't we utilize the ocean water and put up D cell plants? And we would have no problem with water ever again. We'd never hear about a drought and anything. So then I get my water bill, and I open it up, and in the literature inside, there's actually a plan to put a D cell plant out on the west side. Could you tell us about that?
Sure, um, so, I agree, you know, there's a seemingly, seemingly endless supply of water in the ocean. We are currently involved in the early stages of a desalination plant. We've issued a design, build, operate, maintain contract, so we've got someone on board that is working through the early stages of planning permitting to design and build a one point seven million gallon a day seawater desalination production facility. It should have the capability to expand to a larger capacity in the future, based on the results of the initial runs. And I don't have an exact schedule right now, like I said, it's early, but, uh, you know, we hope to have this thing running up within the next five years or so. And, you know, it could be a great model of things to come. Uh, and unlike, you know, like you said, there's water in the oceans, I know under certain fire conditions helicopters are able to dip water, but as we saw in Maui, winds could prohibit that, so a D cell facility would be effective in putting actual water in pipelines that would feed hydrants and, you know, offset our use of groundwater, right? We know that we've been in an extended drought, and so groundwater, uh, resource sustainability has always been an issue, which is why we come out here and ask people to conserve water on a regular basis. So you're right, we, uh, there is an effort underway, you know, we cross our fingers for major successes there and, you know, see how it goes. And I will definitely provide updates as we move along with the project, I'm very closely tied to the project in the office, so as major hurdles, major steps are made, I will report those back to the community as well.
Other questions for the Board of Water Supply? Seeing none, Dominic, thank you for being with us. Hey, next on our agenda, as you recall, last month, we, uh, announced that John Nygro had passed, and that makes a vacancy in Sub District Three. Board members, do you have anyone to nominate to fill that vacancy? Yes, Melissa?
I'd like to nominate Mark Howard.
Mark Howard. Any other nominations to fill that vacancy? Mr. Howard, would you come to the microphone over here and give us about a minute of who you are?
Certainly, um, my name's Mark Howard, I'm, uh, the owner and broker of Waikiki. Hello, sir, okay, sorry. Uh, Mark Howard, I live, work, and play in District Three of Waikiki, uh, owner and broker of my real estate company. It's headquartered in the lobby of the Waikiki Grand Hotel, right there in the neighborhood. Um, I'm originally from New Zealand, was in Waikiki through the nineties, very early to mid nineties, which was an interesting time for Waikiki. Uh, but I've been back here since two thousand and nine, and a full-time resident, um, and a board member also of the Waikiki Grand Hotel. Um, I own a couple of properties, condo hotels, uh, fully permitted in Waikiki, so heavily invested in the area. And, um, have a support staff in my real estate company of about thirty people, so we have a small, um, team of, uh, full-time employees. Any questions?
Thank you. Board members, do you have questions for Mr. Howard? We have a nominee for, to fill Sub District Three, I'm going to ask. Member Henskey.
Good evening, I want to recommend Mark, I have known him for a number of years, and I think he would be a great addition to our board. So if there's a nomination, I second it.
I, I don't know, we need a nomination as second, I think. We're good. Ask Judy Ann to take a roll call vote, as is required for this. Sit down, sir.
Okay, um, board members, uh, we, this nomination is to elect, uh, Mark Howard for Sub District Three. Member Anderson. Member Brown. Member Cabanaro.
Yes.
Member Doldo. Member, or Vice Chair Ottercheck.
Yes.
Member Philitt. Uh, Chair Finley. Member Henskey.
Yes.
Uh, Member Jacob Ken. Member Mers. Member Gray. Member Snyder. And Member Worth. So that is one. Thirteen yeses and zero abstain. Welcome to our board, Mark.
Welcome.
Stand up and have, uh, get sworn in, please.
I solemnly swear, I will faithfully support the Constitution and the laws states of America, the Constitution and laws of the State of Hawaii, Charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu, and the provisions of the neighborhood plan. And I will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties to the best of my abilities as a member of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board, of which I've been elected.
Next on our agenda, we have a presentation from the Waikiki Improvement Association and a Safe and Sound presentation that you're kind of running together. So Trevor, are you ready? Okay, I'd like to welcome City Prosecutor Steve Arm, who has been working with us on Safe and Sound for what? Two years now and one year of actual?
Right, as I was running for office, I came to tell you, if, if I ever got in a position to get this started again, I would. Happy to work with you folks, good to see you all. Uh, and, you know, Safe and Sound is really all about collaboration with H P D, with the city, with members of the community identifying problems that we can try to work together on. And the Waikiki bid has been such a great partner in this, uh, including hiring now a coordinator to work on it, and I'm sure you'll be talking about her and her background. Just a couple of things, when we looked at the whole year, you know, and as was stated before, uh, you know, burglaries down thirty-two percent, criminal property damage twenty-eight, breaking into cars thirty-two percent. Um, one of the, there have been about fifteen hundred arrests and citations since it started a little over a year ago. Um, there have been two hundred fifty-six geographic restrictions granted, three thirteen denied. But the numbers are getting closer, because we were very vocal with the judiciary about our disappointment that they weren't granting the geographic restrictions. And I think it finally had an impact, because since January, many, many more have been granted. And I think that's pressure by the mayor, the city council chair, and myself in trying to, try to bring that up. As, as John was saying, you know, more felony arrests, I think the habitual property offender is, is part of that solution. But I'm really frustrated with the judiciary, because they're not doing felony probation appropriately. And Lawrence Smalls is the perfect example, he's the guy that we did first in this series, he had a hundred and sixty-one convictions, had never done more than credit for time served, a day or two or three in jail. So he got convicted, he got the year in jail, four years of probation, year in jail. But they just let him out, and he came back to Waikiki and was back in, uh, you know, ABC store stealing another bottle of alcohol. So he's been charged again, he's back in custody, he's, you know, we're get, we taxpayers are going to spend another year with him locked up at O triple C without ever dealing with his drinking. And until that's dealt with, he's never going to stop. And, you know, God, I don't know what the numbers are, fifty-five, sixty thousand a year to lock people up there. So we'll keep putting pressure on the judiciary to try to do felony probation more accurately, because there are three times as many people on felony probation as on Oahu as there are in prison. And I mean prison halava or women's or the mainland, and so you've got to do probation right, and it's not being done right, right now. But we'll keep trying to charge a bunch of folks with the felonies, and, and that should help. The, just to give you an idea of the, of the size of the, of the challenge, Flonakakuni is head of the misdemeanor division, and, and they get about just under four thousand arrests or citations a month. So it's a lot of stuff to go through, uh, and, you know, we are trying to hire more people, like many, like many agencies, like H P D, it's a challenge. But I have to say, the city, the mayor's been great, the city council's been great, so we've been able to raise the salaries. So we are now competitive with all the other government agencies and even with many of the private firms. So when young lawyers are coming out, we can attract more of them. The starting salary has been raised seventeen thousand dollars since I came in, through a series of, of two raises and one internal. Uh, we, we made a salary structure for the first time. We're going to get a really good young lawyer, a lot of you may know Richard Hope, he's a defense attorney, well, his son is going to be starting with us, and he's coming from a very good private firm, he's taking a pay cut. But the only place to get litigation is our office or the public defenders, and so he, he's going to be great as an example. We've got a bunch of other guys. To show we have no ageism, we are hiring a lawyer who's my age to just start. You know, it's, but I'm really happy about it, uh, now, one thing, the last thing I wanted to say is, um, we're really worried the legislature is going to legalize marijuana, and we have a lot of problems in the city, and people don't think about it. They think back to their high school days, where maybe they smoked a joint when it was three percent T H C, not a big deal. Well, now it's in the stores, weed stores, and I was just in Oregon, going to port, you know, checking, I went to University of Oregon, you know, decades ago. But the store is there, it's twenty, thirty, forty percent T H C, and concentrates are over ninety percent. So we had a Jerry Gibson at the, uh, Marriott, gave us a ballroom, we had a, a conference recently, just to try to educate people in it. And places like Colorado have had ten years of legalized marijuana. They have an increase in fatal car crashes, they have more kids going to the emergency departments of hospitals, and it's because it's just so much stronger. Kids are going to the hot, emergency room saying, I'm going crazy, you know, they literally are saying that. And almost every, every few days, you can see a new article in the New York Times, Wall Street Journal, Washington Post, about problems with marijuana. So I wrote an op-ed piece, uh, that was in the Sunday paper, I, I brought some copies here, I can leave this for the whole. carried visitor industry. And I didn't know this until we started looking into it a few months ago. But they said in Japan, marijuana is put in the same basket with methamphetamine and cocaine. And people, he said, who's head of Japan Travel Bureau, JTB, before COVID, they would bring in 500,000 tourists a year by themselves. He said, if you legalize marijuana here, the Japanese tourists are going to stop coming. And if that happens, our economy is in huge trouble. They're the exact kind of tourists we want coming. We do not want college students from California coming to party, and you know they come to Waikiki. And that is not the kind of tourist, no offense. We were all college, a lot of us are college students one day, but not that, we want the Japanese tourists. They spend a lot of money. They don't cause, they don't get arrested for crimes. And trying to educate the legislators about this is a real challenge. So if any of you feel the same way about it when a bill comes up, it passed the Senate last time. When it went to the House, essentially Scott Seike just killed it. But I don't think that can continue to happen. We're trying to talk to Josh Green about it. Scott Miskovich, who many of you know, a great doctor here. He's trying to talk to him about it. Many members of his cabinet don't like it. It's, it, there's no doctor who thinks it's a great idea. So anyway, we will be asking people to go to the legislature and testify. If you haven't testified before, don't worry. It's not a scary prospect. They give you one minute. So if you say your name and that you're against it, you're, that's about it. But I really, the folks from Colorado were very sobering when they said to me, your, your city, the character of your city is going to change forever. In Colorado now, there are more weed stores than there are McDonald's and Starbucks combined. And if you talk to people who've gone to Denver, who've gone to Seattle, who've gone to Portland, it's not what we want here in Waikiki, at least my opinion on it. So anyway, I look forward to continuing to work in all your parts, you know, safe and sound, going as strong as possible.
Steve?
Yeah.
When this bill comes up again, we can put it on our agenda.
That would be great.
And if you could have one of your prosecutors or yourself
We will notify you and keep you up to date on it.
Okay.
They need to hear from all sorts of citizens about this. Yeah. What you?
We'll do questions now, so make prepared.
Thank you, Prosecutor Arm, and really for everything you've been doing for this community. I greatly appreciate it. There's been notable progress here. I'm glad you brought up the issue with the state judiciary. You know, that's something that's been going on for a while. Just a few questions for you. Do you have any, are there any other concerns from the state judiciary not being responsive to our needs? And then sort of getting into the homeless nexus of the problem, right? Unfortunately, a lot of those who are unsheltered in Waikiki, they have substance, mental health abuse issues. So right now, are there pathways to, excuse me, not have them get trapped in the prison to homeless pipeline and divert them? And then on the marijuana thing, real quick. Interesting that you bring that up. Would your concerns be mitigated at all if the state were to include in the legislation regulating the THC content? Or is there no viable way to do that? Thank you.
No state, your last question first. No state has been able to regulate it. But New York, being New York, said, we're going to do it. Nobody else can do it, but we know how to do this stuff better than everybody. We're going to have a 15% THC. That lasted, you know, like overnight. And then all the pressure. There is no state that has done any of it. And if any of you came to that event, it was pretty sad because all these people spoke about different parts of it, the schools, the, you know, because Keith Ayashi, superintendent, wanted to be there, but he had to be on Maui. He said they have third graders who are vaping. You know, it's a disaster. No place has been able to say it. So Representative Thomas spoke up, and he said, I want to work with law enforcement to try, thank you, sorry, to set up guardrails so those under 21 can't get their hands on it. And, you know, I stood up and I said, there is no way to legalize a powerful drug safely. You know, kids can't buy alcohol. How's that work, right? There's, you cannot stop this once you start legalizing. And it's going to be Big Tobacco. It's going to be Big Pharma. It's Big Ag. That's who runs it. The tobacco companies are buying all the stock in these marijuana companies. As far as the judiciary goes, I've had to live with the fact that it's, we have a lenient judiciary. There is no question about it. There is a culture of leniency, whether it's in district court for misdemeanors or circuit court for felony. I don't think that's going to change anytime soon. But at least before, we could run probation the right way and hold people accountable and help them get clean and sober and keep them by drug testing, by giving them jail sanctions. You know, that can, that can help to do that, I think. And we'll try to work on that. What was the third question?
For, especially for those who are homeless, who, and then the pathways for them to get help.
There are a lot of neat programs going on right now out there. One of the ones that really needs to be expanded is the ACT, the Assisted Community Treatment, where you can file a petition. It's now in family court. We're going to try to get the law changed so it's not just the court in Kapale, but it can be district court and circuit court, which will force a person, if they're a danger to themselves or others, to take medication or to be hospitalized. And once they, you know, for schizophrenics, there's a really good medicine, a shot once a month, and then it expands. It really helps them do a lot better. And about, I think it was in February, a group of 12 of us went to Miami and saw Judge Lifeman and the program he's doing to help the chronically homeless with serious mental illness. 10 years ago, they had an 8,100 homeless count. Last year, it was 1,100. And when we were driving around the five days there, we saw two homeless people on the streets. Now, there's no champion for the program here. We're trying to help out with it. We're trying to hold them to follow the Miami model because unless you do that, it's not going to work. But there's a real good, real approach with that. We're also going to start, we started a program a while back called Sudafast for Substance Use Disorder Fast. HPD has arrested, it started in, what, in Chinatown. They've arrested 150 chronically homeless folks for drug possession. And I'm convinced that people sleeping on the sidewalks in Chinatown have mental health or drug problems or both. And the idea now is when they get arrested, we have a certified substance use counselor go down to OCCC and do an assessment right then and get them into a program. So it's done at the front end, not after sitting there for months, getting put on probation, and then a probation officer trying to help them. The city has the core program where they're, you know, with the ambulance, expired ambulances going around and helping people, developing relationships to Health and Human Services with Heather Lusk. They're trying to do that stuff. John knows a lot about the program in Miami. And we, I think there's real potential for it. There's still work that needs to be done, but I think the potential is there. John, did you have something to add to that?
Judge Lifeman just opened his center. So essentially, what it is, is it's an alternative to jail, like jail diversion. You're facing a lot of jail time. Your other option is to go to this treatment center. I don't know whether that's voluntary or not, but if it's voluntary, we might have a problem. If it's mandatory, I think it'll work.
It's voluntary. The example, the, the good news for Miami, as he said to us, it's a 23-year overnight success. So by now, it's got, they've got great peer counselors who are on the street themselves. They can talk to people out there and encourage them and convince them to give it a try. And this center has a podiatrist because every homeless person has bad feet. There's a dentist. There's, you know, the whole thing is based on the idea that if someone has a serious mental illness and they get in front of a judge, the judge, in many cases, will find they are unfit for trial. And so what happens then is they go into the Hawaii State Hospital and get kicked out very soon afterwards. So what they do in Miami is they, and what we're trying to do here is the judge doesn't make that call. It's not presented to him or her. They try to get them into this alternative program, which is voluntary. Now, they can't, there's a hook on them because they're released on pre-trial supervised release. That's the judge's authority. So if they run away, a warrant get, you know, can get had for them. It's a hard thing. This guy, Richard Janobia, they've tried, they're trying to work with him on it. But if it can work, it can really help. Now, most of the cases are going to be misdemeanors and petty misdemeanors because that's who these seriously mentally ill homeless folks, the disorderly conduct, other kind of thing. But we'll keep at it. I think there's a real potential for this program. Now, what they have there is a 1% tax on every restaurant that grosses more than $400,000 a year. It brings in a lot of money, like to set up that, that center for 200 people. But the potent, the savings is huge. So if we can get this rolling and, and make it work, I think, I think it could be a real help. And, and the folks from the Waikiki Bid are going to be a real help in the ACT program and otherwise.
So follow, well, I have the mic here. Changing subject briefly. The elephant in Waikiki right now is the ACLU lawsuit and injunction, which was heard last week and not covered by anybody except KITV, including the star advertiser. They didn't go, or at least they didn't write an article on it. But essentially, simplifying it, this board and myself, we crusaded to get the parks closed, the beach closed here at midnight to decrease the trouble and to make it a uniform midnight closure. 43% of our convictions are either park closed or park rules or related to that. Okay? If the ACLU prevails, the way I understand it, is the only people who can go on the park after midnight are those who are involuntarily homeless. And nobody knows what that means, including probably you, who's been in the business for a long time. And so how are the police going to enforce that? Number one. And number two, because I have a home or somebody has a hotel room or somebody has a place to sleep, you're going to have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that that person has a place to sleep, and they're the ones that can be prosecuted. It's almost absurd. So what are your thoughts on this? If it, if it goes wrong?
It's going to be a real problem, it's granted. And I think the, the legal argument is if a police officer approaches a homeless guy right now for a park closure, the, the two questions are, one, is there a bed space available right now, like at IHS? And if there is, they should be able, able to cite or arrest that person for whatever the crime is. The other way that courts are looking at it is you look at it as a whole, not just this one guy, but the eight, whatever the thousands of people we have are homeless, could they have bed space available for them all at once? To me, that is ludicrous to try to look at it that way. To me, it should be for this guy right now because the idea, there is bed space available in the shelter. People don't want to go there because they have rules. You can't drink. You can't smoke. You can't bring your dog. You know, and, you know, it's too bad. But at some point, we've got to protect our public spaces. And that means, so I'm hoping, I think it's Judge Chang is going to decide this. I'm sure hoping we, and what I mean is citizens, besides ASU, win this argument. Anyway, I know you had a question.
Yeah, Peter, thanks for the work you and your department have done and for the police, Steve. And I was just curious. You mentioned that the Japanese market will be suppressed if we legalize pot. Like why? Because they equate it with math?
In Japan, it's still
And they would think it'd be like a crazy, okay, it'd be like a crazy
And so they said if a celebrity gets caught with some weed there, their career is almost over. Brooks Baer, who does communications for my office now, he was just in Japan. He's watching TV, and this guy's being led away in handcuffs. And then they show the drugs that he was caught with, and it was a couple of small baggies of marijuana. Because he, he doesn't speak, but his wife is Japanese. So she was telling him he was caught with some marijuana, and so he got arrested.
So they think it'll be a crime-ridden mess if we legalize it?
That is a real, I mean, they just view this very differently. And the general counsel from Korea is a real interesting guy. He was a general in the South Korean army. He said the same thing. He was out of town or he would have testified. Korean tourists will stop coming because they can get drug tested when they go back. And if they test positive, they're in big trouble. So it just sounds, you know, at this conference, this guy, you know, it was funny. A couple of the medical marijuana folks were there. And, and we weren't picking a fight with them, but they still wanted to be heard. If it gets legalized, they are going to be driven out of business because the black market grows when you have legalized weed. You know, and the, the small mom and pop farms are going to get driven out of business. It's going to be these big operators that are going to do it.
Right.
Anyway, I, yeah.
Hi, Prosecutor Arm.
Hi there.
Just a quick question for you. If you could provide your thoughts on an interesting Sybil Beat article that came out today. Appears to be a referral to your office. This is the YNI condo development, this is the headline. This YNI condo development has lost hundreds of thousands of dollars to embezzlement. And this has to do with Hawaiian properties. Are you aware of that case?
I am not. So we'll take a look. We usually look at the newspaper and Sybil Beat and get ideas. Nothing's been referred to us that I'm aware of.
So you're not aware that it was referred? It's over $300,000 that was confirmed to be embezzled from Hawaiian?
Is that right? Well, somebody should get prosecuted for that, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
No question about it. Yeah.
So actually, I went to the University of Miami. So I'm very curious about this program and actually, I clerked for some of the judges down there. So is it possible for you to provide more information? And Judy Ann, would it be possible to upload that to the Google Drive? Because I'd love to hear about more about these programs and get more information. And I'm, thank you so much for researching because it's great to see just follow programs that have worked.
Yeah.
You know, why reinvent the wheel? Especially Miami. I mean, you think they have a drug problem here? Miami is like, yeah, the game, like, yeah.
Well, and all of the good weather, and they're convinced it's the good weather is part of it. And part of it, they think it's still a carryover from the Mario boat list, that, that some of these guys are in their 80s and stuff. You know, the ones that are left on the street are really a hardcore group to deal with. Now, it concerns me when we asked about the question, has this program been duplicated in Florida? I don't think it has. I don't think it has. But you need a champion to get any program going. Like I, I was, and Cheryl, you know, I was for Hope probation. And when the champions leave, it's really hard to keep programs going. So we'll try to send some. They don't have a catchy name for it, is part of the problem. Uh, but we'll get some information to you guys about this program in Miami.
Let's see your hand up.
My hand's up. It's Margaret Murchy. Um, I've got two things, uh, to ask you about. Well, the whole of Canada is legalized marijuana. And it doesn't seem like it's a big problem there. And what I've noticed here are the medical marijuana businesses, licensed ones, they're owned by insider politicians, ex-hotels, former head of DBID. You know, I mean, come on, they're, of course they're against it. But I mean, I'm not a marijuana smoker, but I think you're taking it a little far. I mean, the whole of Canada has it. Anyway, but my second thing is, are, is there any action from your office on your promised enforcement of noisy street performers and their amplified noise issues? I know you testified against it. The whole city council voted for it. And you and the mayor vetoed it.
The second and first, I, I don't know if the ma, if, if Tommy Waters, we're working with him on a bill.
He's done it.
I don't want to get it.
He's, he's done it forever.
No, I understand. The bill they had before HPD and us agreed was unenforceable. So it's a false thing to try to tell people to get their expectations up and have it not work. So now there is another bill.
Steve, there's a bill on the books from 1999.
Now there's another, now there's another bill that we're working on because he wants to make sure we're not going to ask it to be vetoed. So we're working with him on it. We expect, you know, it to be introduced shortly. So just stand by and see if that works. We're hoping it will work.
There's a bill on the books from 1999 about amplified music.
Point of order, Margaret Murchy, you have to wait and be acknowledged by Chair before you actually respond. Thank you.
Okay. And on the second question about Canada, uh, there is no place in the world, I think, that relies on tourism like we do. So whatever other issues came up, the fact that if Japanese tourists are going to stop coming here, to me, that should be the end of the discussion, right? And people have told me, well, the system doesn't work now. Well, I don't see the system as broken. Any adult seems to be able to buy marijuana if they choose to from their friend or the guy down the street or whatever, or they can go to a medical marijuana store. It's been decriminalized, so you get like a traffic ticket. It's not part of the criminal justice system. And so I don't think the system now is broken and certainly I don't think legalizing it would help.
Next speaker, please. We have one on, on my second term.
Me?
Margaret.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. Um, yeah, first of all, you're suggesting, and, and Margaret made a good point, that the big corporate interests are ready to march in or already there. And that also, you didn't really make the point that marijuana is not a gateway drug. You're talking about all of this serious criminal activity that goes on through fentanyl or opioids or something like that. My suggestion is this, you're worried about the percentage of THC. Go to get the seeds that are only the 3% and you let people have opportunities to grow them in their backyard or their home or whatever. And you will have, you will see all kinds of things disappear, I think, in terms of criminal activity. What are your thoughts on that? You only seem to talk about punishment and problems. But how about talking about something positive like a seed, um, program where they could be sold, uh, you know, carefully in, um, open way. Okay?
As, as I said before, the, no place in the country has been able to control with things like what you just said. Once the money flows in, the politicians are going to do whatever the money says to do. And you talked about limiting it to seeds. If that got started, the money's going to flow. It's not going to, it's not going to, they're not going to be able to stop it. And that's the thing. And, you know, the gateway argument, people are on both sides of it. I, you know, I, I don't think it's worth pursuing for that. Right now, it's not a crime to possess marijuana. So the, the, the system is not broken. It's been decriminalized. Uh, people can go to, you know, web, they can go to a medical marijuana store and easily get it if they have headaches or anything else. And when I was a judge, if somebody had a motorcycle accident and weed helped them, I'd rather have them smoking weed than Vicodin, Oxycontin, all of that kind of stuff. I mean, it's, that's really harmful stuff. And under the supervision of a doctor like Scott Miskovich, it can be a, an effective alternative. I know people who have nausea from cancer. If marijuana helps them, that's great. They should be able to do that. I'm just worried about trying to control it. Has never been able to be successful so far. So anyway, that's what we've learned across the country.
Yeah, thank you. Um, in regards to the weed and your conference?
Yeah.
Um, I talked to a lot of people that went to that. And it's, it's a little bit disturbing because when I was working with CRU, with the troublemakers down at the picnic tables, there were guys down there selling weed to tourists. And the police would not arrest them because the prosecutor would never file charges. This is, I mean, this is, they're specifically selling it to tourists. That includes Japanese, you know. So they're down there and they've been observed. The cops know who they are. But then I said, well, why aren't you selling? You watch a guy sell it right at the tables. And the police officers would say, well, why would we arrest them? Because we're going to take them to jail for selling, right? And the prosecutor's never going to file charges. And then the second real quick thing on this ACLU case, I don't know if you're involved with Corporation Counsel.
We're not.
But I, I told this to the mayor. I cannot believe Corporation Counsel did not ask for the judge assigned to the case to recuse himself because he's obviously got bias. He was a public defender before he was appointed judge. He, he heads up and advocates for homeless programs. And I can't believe why the city didn't ask that he recuse.
That doesn't sound like Gary Chang. Oh, Jack Tonaki.
Gentlemen, let's raise our hands before we start yelling.
And, and I don't know if, I don't, I'll look into the stuff about it, our, this, our office not prosecuting sales. I, I've never heard of that before. So I'll ask about it because possession is not against the law now. So, you know, but we don't want it being sold, like you said, Japanese tourists or other people, any tourists. I mean, that's, it's not just Japanese tourists. It's families from anywhere are, would stop coming here. If this is just another place with a lot of weed and you smell it all over. So. Anyway, but I'll take a look at that. I, you know, it might make sense to do some of those selling cases because that's still against the law, but possession is not.
I think I've got a last question from Lou.
Yeah, just a quick question. I guess that's a similar to what you're saying. I mean, I kind of agree that as long as it's currently decriminalized, there's probably not a real problem that needs to get solved. Uh, so I tend, I do tend to agree with that. Uh, but just the way I understand, your, your concern is the store, is having stores. I, I guess, right? So I mean, because whether it's decriminalized or it's small amounts of possession where in fact both legalized, that really wouldn't make that much of a difference. I guess your concern is that once it's legalized and you can't stop having, having people open up dispensaries that sell it.
Right. And, and what other cities have found is most of the stores are in low-income neighborhoods. So Kalihie would have a whole bunch of stores, the YNI coast would have a whole bunch of stores. Our students are behind already in school because of COVID. The last thing we need to do is to make
No, I understand. I'm just wondering, I mean, is, is there not a way that you can legalize the possession, but not, but, but not necessarily allow the sale, stores to sprout up and, and
Well, that's the way it is right now. I mean, it's, it's
Right.
decriminalized. So nobody gets arrested for possession of
Right. And yet nobody can openly sell it. So the current, the current situation is not really broken in that respect.
I don't think it is either.
No, no, I tend to agree.
You know, and the stores, you know, when I went to the stores in, in Oregon, they were clean. They were well-lit. They were almost empty because most people go and buy it from the black market. Because when you make money, you have to tax it and it's going to be more expensive than the black market. So it's kind of sad to see that Attorney General in California in the news recently asking the legislature to reduce the tax so the stores could sell more because they're getting beaten up by, by the black market. It, you know, it's like opening up gambling, but we'll put in a lot of illegal, you know, gambling addict programs. Anyway.
Prosecutor, thank you very much for being with us tonight. Next, we have Trevor from the Waikiki Business Improvement District Association. So many letters in that organization, sometimes get confused. And he's doing his annual presentation on what the W bid is doing in Waikiki. And as soon as we get up online.
I think we're good. Can everyone see that? Mine too. Great. Well, thank you, everyone. My name's Trevor Abarzua and I am the new president and executive director of the Waikiki Business Improvement District. I've been on the job about five months, so I'm new to the neighborhood, but I'm excited to be here and excited to come to all the meetings as much as I can and, and hear from you all. Um, and I'm going to get into what, what the bid is, what the Waikiki Business Improvement District is, what we do, how we're working with Steve Alm in Prosecuting Attorney's Office, how we're working with Rep. Tam and Senator Morawaki in the mayor's office. But we're a community group and we're here in Waikiki. We live and breathe Waikiki and, and again, we're excited to be here. So, so what is the bid or who is the bid and how are they funded? So the Waikiki Business Improvement District, we're a nonprofit. We're a 501(c)(3), but we're a public-private partnership. And back in 2000, the commercial repairs, so all the hotels, all the restaurants, all the commercial property owners wanted additional services within Waikiki. You know, the city picks up the trash and they provide the police officers and the fire department and the landscaping, but they wanted an extra level of service, right? With, this is the crown jewel of the tourism industry. We have 30,000 residents that live here and work here and we have over 80,000 people that come in and work. So what, and, and I'm sorry, tourists, but we wanted additional services. So in 2000, they created a special district. So the state voted on it and then the city enacted it to be able to, uh, the commercial repairs were able to tax themselves. They say, okay, we want to pay an extra tax, which is very rare for businesses to say. We want to pay extra tasks, extra tax to have more services within Waikiki. So there are three different sections of Waikiki. There's the Kalakaua Cohio area, which is that main corridor that, that pays an additional extra, the most tax. And then it goes to the Kalakaua, to Makai side, and then there is just the rest of greater Waikiki. But I think the main thing is what we do is we are the aloha ambassadors. So you see the aloha ambassadors on the street. I'm sure you see them in front of your apartments, in front of your businesses. But we do all of the, uh, clean and safe program. So all the cleaning, all the cleanliness, you see the power washing going on. You see all the landscaping, our guys and girls with the, uh, with the neon shirts. So we, again, are providing that additional level of service paid for by that extra tax, commercial repairs. We also work again with the police department and Safe and Sound, uh, to coordinate those efforts. So we want to be kind of that, that quarterback. There's all these different, uh, organizations, different entities that are doing work within Waikiki, but from the community standpoint, from that business community standpoint, uh, we want to be kind of that connector. And it's been a great success. Obviously, prosecutor attorney Alm talked about the great success of Safe and Sound, but I'll talk about a few other stats. Um, a new program that we're launching is a homeless and outreach initiative, which uh, we're partnering with IHS and I'll get to, and then disaster preparedness and training. As we know, with what happened in Maui, that's always top of mind and, uh, I'll talk about what we do. But in terms of the budget breakdown, again, we, our budget is a little bit less than $5 million a year. But over 86% of that budget goes towards services on the street. Um, so landscaping, custodial, and then hospitality and safety. So all of our ambassadors are also hospitality ambassadors. So if you're a tourist and you're walking down the street and you need to know where the beach is, which that's, it's funny because that's the number one question we get even when it's right behind them. But, uh, we provide that hospitality level of service. It's almost kind of a, we have that big name tag or how can I help you? And then people, and we have people that speak multiple languages. We have ambassadors that speak Japanese. We have ambassadors that speak Spanish. But they're able to help those people, uh, within the district. So a big initiative right now that we're excited to launch and I want to talk about is, uh, a branding and marketing effort within Waikiki. And not so much branding and marketing Waikiki as a tourist destination. You know, we have plenty of visitors coming and the Waikiki Tourism Authority does a great job. We want to make sure that we are getting the word out on all the services that we provide to the community. So whether it's the visitors that are coming in, how can you engage with an aloha ambassador? How can you engage with the bid? But also to residents, whether that's, uh, street closures, whether that's big events. As we know, those street festivals have been going on in the street, you know, warnings or, or awareness on when those are going on. But being kind of that community meeting point on the websites, on social media. So we want to have that presence so that people in this room could, could really utilize. And then, you know, working more with the media, earned media, so working with the TV stations, the star advertiser to make sure they're getting the word out and what's going on within Waikiki, but also being a direct line of communication to you all. You know, showing up to the neighborhood board, being able to have newsletters, being able for you all to check our website so that we are a resource to, uh, the neighborhood. So this is a, uh, just an example of our current website. It hasn't been updated since, uh, our inception in 2000. And as you know, uh, the internet has changed a lot since 2000, so we would like to update that. So this is a sneak peek and, and this, we got these actually today. So it's a rough draft of our new website. But we, I wanted to share with you all. Um, so this is kind of a rough draft of what it would look like. So um, it's kind of hard to see maybe the people on the, uh, on the Zoom could actually see a little bit better, but we, uh, put together a documentary that, uh, a lot of our stakeholders were featured in. Rick Aggad was featured in a couple of years back, Senator and, uh, Rep. Tam were featured in. But it's just on what Waikiki is and, and also what our ambassadors do. But the main thing we wanted to highlight is this kind of explore Waikiki page. So for a visitor to come in, they could see dining options, shopping options, hotels. If you Google any city across the country, Austin or downtown LA, uh, this website appears and it's usually by a business improvement district throughout the country. So we wanted to modernize that and to make sure that, uh, the residents also can use it. So here's just another example of what it would look like. We'll have all the restaurants, all the hotels, parking, um, but also events, you know, when events are coming up, uh, you'll be able to check it out, the details of the events. But also too, maybe if there's a street closure, maybe if there's, uh, an operational time of the event, it'll be down there as well. Um, but the main thing I wanted to make sure you all knew about is this request for service page. And again, this website isn't live yet and it'll launch hopefully in January, probably February. But it'll be a request for service. So if there, someone spilled a, a bunch of trash in front of your apartment, if you're seeing someone with a mental illness have an episode in your neighborhood, if you are seeing a safety concern, that's not necessarily an emergency that you would call 911. We want you to reach out to us so that we could get on it right away. Again, we have ambassadors throughout the district. We have over 60 ambassadors that work full-time, around the clock even. So if you, if there is something in the neighborhood that you want to kind of send to us, we'll have a page that you can request service and then we'll be able to dispatch right away. Also, social media, you know, we did not have social media, any social media, uh, before I got on. But I think it's a big priority of ours to, again, communicate with neighborhood board and the residents on what our priorities are. So being able to get the word out on social media. So make sure you go follow us, WBID or Waikiki Bid on social media. And this is just an example. Again, we did a donation drive within the district for the Maui fires and uh, we were able to work with Rep. Tam and Senator Morawaki and get some of those supplies over to the state capitol. But, uh, again, getting the word out on different initiatives that we're doing within the district. So I'll talk a little bit about district programs, what we've been working on, um, on Safe and Sound, on pre-disaster preparedness, and then also on this, uh, homeless initiative, uh, that is brand new. So obviously, uh, pre-disaster response and preparedness has been, uh, top of mind for everyone the last few months, the last few weeks. And we at the bid want to be that convener. I'm not an expert in disaster preparedness, but we want to be the ones to bring those experts in to make sure that Waikiki has a plan, whether that's for the businesses, whether that's for the residents. But we want to be able to own that plan, be able to share it with the community and be able to make sure it's in action when we, when we need it most. And actually, back in 2015, the Waikiki Business Improvement District worked with University of Hawaii and the National Disaster Preparedness Training Center, which is a worldwide, world-renowned training center, but it's actually housed at the University of Hawaii. And Dr. Carl Kim is the expert, one of the leading experts in the world, and we're just so fortunate that he is, actually lives here. And, uh, he lives in Manoa. So they created this plan back in 2015 and they worked on it all throughout 2018. It's a living document. It's over 500 pages and we have it and, and we're ready for use. But what we want to do is make sure to bring that in bite-sized pieces. If, if there's a tsunami in one hour, I don't expect anyone in this room to read a 500-page document on what to do. So we're going to break that plan up, make sure it's accessible on our website, make sure that we're meeting with the neighborhood board and they're aware of it, uh, to be able to get that information to you. And again, it's important to share it with the public, you know, convene frequent trainings with that National Disaster Preparedness Center. Work with the city that already has plans in place, work with the state. But again, us being that quarterback, us being that convener and making sure Waikiki has the resources and that we're kind of have that extra, um, care that goes on in this. So. So Safe and Sound, again, we talked about it, but these are stats on the screen. If you compare before Safe and Sound started, so 2021 to 2022, September to August, and then when Safe and Sound kicked off, September 2022 to August 2023. Um, so a tremendous reduction in crime. And, and as Prosecutor Alm said, it was, it was definitely a team effort. Uh, there was a lot that went into it, a lot of different stakeholders, including the neighborhood board. And I just wanted to, she was supposed to be here today and gave her a small report, but we'll make sure she comes, but we were able to, uh, through a grant with the city and county of Honolulu and the Kasasa Family Foundation. So ABC Stores, uh, CEO, were able to bring on a Safe and Sound executive coordinator. So this person is going to be working with Prosecutor Alm's office, making sure she's working with HPD, but also the social service organizations and making sure they're part of that solution as well. So that we have extra resources and we have extra care, again, on top of what the city and on top of what everyone else is already providing. So just those updates. And I know that the neighborhood board was instrumental in this, but I think one of the biggest reasons why, apart from, um, the, the police efforts, apart from the geographic restrictions, was this park closure. Uh, moving it up to 2:00 AM, but then the neighborhood board voting to move it to midnight. It has been tremendous in terms of us being able to enforce crime. It has been tremendous in terms of being able to clean the park. So we're really appreciative of that. And the mayor's office providing that private security overnight. You know, I don't know if you've seen them, they have the golf carts, they have the big security shirts, but they're off-duty HPD officers that are able to provide that extra level of care. And we've seen tremendous results. We were able to close that bathroom at midnight. Um, and actually, you know, when we were doing our homeless and point-in-time counts and a lot of that crime, uh, graphing, we noticed around that bathroom area at Cohio Beach Park was a, is a big kind of hotspot. So able to close that bathroom at midnight was, again, a huge help to reducing crime in the area. Uh, the jail diversion program that was discussed already, and then just infrastructure improvements is, is a big thing. So another avenue that we want to, as the Business Improvement District, So another avenue that we want to, as the Business Improvement District, get involved in, and I've met with Senator Moriwaki, Rep Tam about this and, and meeting with the mayor's office here in the next few days, is on this crime reduction through environmental design. And it's kind of a university term, but what essentially it means is, is if you make a place look better, if you make a place look cleaner, you make a place look nicer, the bathrooms are nice and, you know, there's no graffiti, then crime kind of goes away. They don't feel welcome, right? Criminals or drug dealers, if, if it looks way nicer then, it's like, ooh, maybe I shouldn't belong. But if there's, it looks darker, there's not enough lighting, then, uh, they attract crime. So as you see on the screen there, you know, there is graffiti that exists at Cohio Beach Park. Our ambassadors throughout the district, if we see graffiti in public areas, apart from Cohio Beach Park, we clean it within twenty-four hours. That's kind of what our team's, uh, status quo is and we make sure it. So again, use that, uh, make sure you call us, make sure you use our new website when you do see graffiti. But how can we assist, uh, Cohio Beach Park? How can we assist the Parks Department and the mayor's office to help clean that up? And then just also thinking of unique ideas, right? You know, those picnic tables at Cohio Beach Park, they attract some of those weed dealers that we see. We attract some of that riffraff. Well, what can we do to, what can we do to put something there? Whether it's a kid's playground, whether it's some sort of activation where it's a positive thing in the community, where people are going there, residents are going there, tourists are going there. And then again, those drug dealers leave. So we're going to be really active on this and really working with the mayor's office and all the other elected officials on implementing this in Waikiki. So I just wanted to talk about homelessness. I know it was brought up and kind of what initiatives are out there on homelessness. And prosecutor Alm said, we need a champion to, to champion a lot of these things. And I think what we want to do at the Business Improvement District is be that champion. We want to step up the business community, the rate pairs, our ambassadors. We want to be that part of that solution. So what we have done, and I think this is what I wanted to show in terms of this slide, is that the, uh, Safe and Sound program has done a tremendous amount for the crime side, but also too on homelessness. So you see, uh, we saw a forty-three percent reduction in homelessness from the start of Safe and Sound, so September twenty twenty-two to May twenty twenty-three. We did a point in time count. And I think the biggest thing was along the beach and along Kalakaua Avenue and along Cohio Beach and the sand area, we saw sixty-eight percent reduction. So in September twenty twenty-two, we saw a hundred eleven people sleeping on the beach or along Kalakaua, which is almost, it's crazy to think about. But then we, in, in May, we counted thirty-six. Now, we still have a number of, uh, individuals that are still homeless out there, you know, over a hundred, we have a hundred forty-three now, uh, still homeless in the district. So what are we going to do to help those individuals? You know, there is definitely a gray area where Safe and Sound was able to take out a lot of those habitual crime offenders, a lot of those drug dealers, a lot of the people that were causing nuisance in the community. But there is that kind of chunk of gray area where, you know, someone's sitting on the sidewalk, they're probably mentally ill, but they're not committing crimes. Maybe they're not even a substance abuse user, but there's something seriously wrong with them and, and a family member, whoever hasn't stepped up to help. So what can we do as the community to help get them off the street, get them the mental health they need? Uh, so again, there's still work to do. Um, I'm sure you've seen Gigi on the street. She's one of our, uh, frequent flyers and she sits right outside on the Billabong store. But she's kind of one of those gray area folks, right, that is not committing crime. She's not stealing anything, but she's definitely, um, at public health risk to everyone here and, and to herself. So what are we going to do? So, uh, we wanted to, at the Business Improvement District, invest in the district. Take those money that, that five million dollars I talked about and invest in a partnership with IHS. And IHS, if you don't know, is kind of the leader in the homelessness space. They're the leader in Hawaii and then they're the leader in, uh, shelter space. So they have outreach workers, mental health workers that go up throughout the island to help take care of those really problem people. Um, but they have, you know, obviously a limited budget and they have a limit, a limited amount of people to help. So what we wanted to do is we saw, you know, we would work with some of these caseworkers that would come into Waikiki and say, okay, you know, please help Gigi. She's having some issues here. And they would say, okay, I can help for maybe twenty minutes, then I gotta drive over to Y and I and help this couple, and then I gotta go to the North Shore and help these people. So by the time, you know, we would get IHS worker to come, they would say, okay, you know, you only have a finite amount of time. So what we wanted to do was say, okay, IHS, we want to invest in your initiative, but we want to house, you know, a mental health worker, a caseworker, someone that is going to build relationships with these people, someone that is going to be an expert. But they don't leave Waikiki. They're going to be housed at our office. They're going to be able to tie into all the IHS services and that senior leadership that they have. But they're just that Waikiki representative, right? They're going to, again, be living and breathing Waikiki. So we're able to announce that partnership at press conference for that one year of Safe and Sound. This isn't a new idea. I know WIA and Rick Eggers here, um, and HTA and HLTA, they did this a couple of years back and they provided, uh, a donation. But I think the difference from a couple of years back and now is again, that person doesn't leave Waikiki. You're going to know them. They're going to be at the neighborhood board meetings. They're going to be at our board meetings with the business, uh, community. But again, what are we going to do? So that's a big investment and it's going to start here soon. We just hired that person. I don't even know the name yet. I just got the email today that they hired someone. They'll be starting in about two to three weeks. So maybe the next board meeting, we could have them here. So along with that Safe and Sound executive coordinator and that IHS person, what they're going to do is work together on that casework. They're going to work together on identifying those individuals, making sure that they have the resources, making sure that they get the mental health treatment. But like prosecutor Alm talked about, is this ACT or assisted community treatment. And, you know, we touched on it, essentially, long story short, is that you petition the court to be able to give you kind of guardianship over that individual that doesn't have family, that won't leave the street and be able to, uh, against their will, give them medicine and make sure that they, for lack there a better word, kind of sober up out of their psychosis, sober up out of their mental illness and say, oh my gosh, you know, I have a brother in Chicago. You know, here's his cell phone number. Oh, hey, you know, I do want to go to that shelter. I do want to take that medicine. So what those two individuals will be doing is focusing again, strictly in Waikiki with those problem individuals, with the people that have those severe mental illness. Um, and, and it's going to take time and it's not a silver bullet. It's on the individual level. Maybe in a year you help get six people off the street, but I think in a neighborhood like Waikiki, that makes a difference. You know, you get six people that are constantly causing problems. You get them off the street, you get them to their family, you get them to a hospital, you do that again, and then you come up with new ideas. Um, but again, we wanted to invest and we wanted to be part of that solution at the Business Improvement District. So we talked about it, but twelve months of Safe and Sound, what's next? And I think what's next is that sound part of Safe and Sound. Again, the prosecutor attorney's office has been doing a tremendous job, HPD. Everyone kind of figured out how, now how to communicate within the Waikiki area, but now how do we move to that sound part, bring in more mental health assistance? So thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions. I, I wanted to make sure we had some time for the, the community portion of it, so I rushed through it. But I'll give everyone my, you know, card after this. If you want to meet one-on-one, if you want to meet for coffee, here are some ideas from you all, how we could grow. Again, uh, we're a community organization. You know, we're funded by the property tax assessments, but you know, there's thirty thousand residents and you guys are, are stakeholders as well. So thank you. Happy to answer questions.
I know that was a lot of information. So Jeff, I see you, you have the question of the hour.
Uh, a comment, um, well, two comments. Uh, and I'll, I've said it before and I'll say it again, the ambassadors, your organization are incredible.
Thank you.
Um, and I really appreciate, I'm in subjects of one, there's no major hotels there in Tons of Tours, but I see those men and women in the neighborhoods. It's all Waikiki. It's very important to me and my community, my subject district, so we appreciate that. And just for clarification, I mean, this is, this organization is different than the Special Improvement District, not that we need to get into all that. But I mean, the, the, the beach stuff, the beach improvements and that, that's a whole other organization, but you guys have your, your mission and your focus. So there's a lot of really good organizations here and, and improvement districts who are funded by the community. This doesn't come out of the, the larger general funds. So I think it's important to note, the money that's generated by these companies and these entities stays in Waikiki to address only our issues. I really like that. Anyway, good presentation. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Goodness, other questions? Sarah.
I have two things. First of all, I love seeing that there's, uh, young folk.
Um, yeah.
I'm one of the old people, so I'm seeing the young folk and happy to say, um, that I think you might talk faster than me. So.
I try. I, I, I know last time that everyone was, was upset that there wasn't enough time for the community discussion, so I want to make sure.
I'm just teasing. I'm, I'm really working on talking slow. Uh, so quick question. I, I didn't quite catch it. You said you will clean graffiti within twenty-four hours if it's reported?
We, correct. Yeah, we try. And I, and you know, I hold my team to that. And I want to specify, so our ambassadors have kind of jurisdiction over public spaces, right? Public buildings. Now, if someone graffiti is the side of an ABC store or a side of a McDonald's, right, we call them right away. We have relationships with all their operations managers. Um, but again, it's kind of on them to clean it. Sometimes they're quick, sometimes they're not, but trust me when I tell you, we definitely ping them and ping them and ping them because we care about, you know, the look and the aesthetic of the community. Um, but even if it's on private property, again, when we have this new website, please, uh, submit it so that we could get it, uh, to.
I have three, sorry, sorry, I have two more questions.
Sure, yeah.
Um, I'm so, I'm not really, so Safe and Sound, I thought Safe and Sound was the prosecutor Alm's program. What, so what is, what funding do you provide for the Safe and Sound program or what?
Sure, yeah, it is prosecutor Alm's program. I think it's a lot of different stakeholders, uh, programs. I think prosecutor Alm was really instrumental in starting it. And, and forgive me, but I've only been here five months, so I wasn't part of the team that started it. But I know prosecutor Alm did a similar program in Chinatown and it worked tremendously. So when he was elected, and correct me if I'm wrong, when he was elected, he said, you know what, we need this in Waikiki too. And he brought the stakeholders together. He brought the business community together. He brought the police department, um, to do this program. So it's a big piece to prosecute these individuals. Now, what we brought is, you know, we're funding this new position, this coordinator of Safe and Sound. So what they do is they kind of help track all the individuals, these habitual crime offenders on the individual level that we notice in the community, right? Again, we have ambassadors that walk the district every day and we notice, hey, you know, Lawrence Smalls has stolen something from ABC stores, you know, a hundred eighty times this year, right? And we just make sure that the HPD is aware, which they, they do a great job and they're aware. But again, just from that community standpoint, from that business standpoint, saying, hey, we're noticing, you know, someone. The HPD and prosecutor Alm's office, they're island wide and they deal with a lot of different issues and a lot of different communities. But us, we wanted to make sure that there was again, extra height and focus on Waikiki and that we are coordinating with them as partners. So.
Actually, that kind of feeds into my second question.
Sure.
Just perfect. Uh, so you said that, so you're, so you're paying for the coordinator that you just hired, right, with Safe and Sound program? Is that, you guys?
Through, through some grants, yes. But it is like kind of paid through our, like their paycheck says, Waikiki Business Improvement District.
But it's not like government grants or like for city and county grants?
So it was from, so half of it was from the city and county of Honolulu. So from the city. And I believe they used some sort of fund. I don't know how they funded it, but it was kind of, they, they provided a grant for this program. And then the Kasasa Family Foundation, which is a private family foundation that was able to match that grant. So we are able to pay for this executive coordinator and she started about three months ago. Uh, we'll have her for two years. And then it could renew if Safe and Sound is continuing to move and the community wants it and we're seeing tremendous results still, then yes, that could be extended, but we do have this grant.
And so the IHS, um, too, that's also being paid by?
So the IHS is actually paid out of our budget. Yes. So we had to vote on it by a board. So our board of directors is all rate pairs. So, you know, ABC Store CEO, whether it's Keoya or the shared, all these different hotels are on our board. And we presented to them this idea. So we're using funds from that budget to be able to, uh, grant IHS this money. And then that person will kind of work in our office, but they'll be paid for by IHS, right? We'll give the money to IHS. And IHS will kind of give us an employee. They're on their payroll, but they're a Waikiki IHS caseworker, but they'll be in our office.
Very good, something.
Yeah, just a quick question. As far as how you align with the Waikiki Improvement Association, there's a lot of these associations that have similar sounding names and I'm, I'm learning a lot more about them as we go. Uh, so how you align and also if you have board members that are participating on all of these associations or some of these associations crossing over the same board members?
We do. I, it's not all the same board. It's probably, you know, there's a chunk, uh, on my board and then there's a chunk on, on WIA's board and maybe some on the, uh, the special beach improvements board. But how we sort of work together is our organization is a five oh one C three. We're a nonprofit and our mission is to provide a service within the district. And we are, we take kind of those, those property tax assessments. So we are sort of a pseudo public-private partnership. Whereas WIA is a five oh one C six. So they're, they are C four, I'm sorry, C four. So they take donations, right? They're a membership organization and they're allowed to advocate for Waikiki at large, right? If there's something going on in the state and, you know, we want to make sure that Waikiki is represented in that state budget or that bill, then, uh, WIA goes to the city council or the state legislature to do that. I am not a registered lobbyist, so I don't go and, you know, I meet with our representatives as a community member and trying to advocate from a community standpoint, but I do not lobby. I do not submit testimonies on bills. I'm not fighting anything. I'm just trying to provide a service within Waikiki. Now, we hold hands. We, we, we work really well. Rick and I meet for breakfast, uh, quite frequently and we're, we're on the same team here. Uh, it's just we're separate organizations.
Uh, Steve? Please use a mic. Thank you.
I, I think there's a glimmer of hope for the ACU lawsuit. And I, the reason I say that is Jack Tenaki, if it's signed to him, he was the public defender for like twenty years. When we did weed and seed in Chinatown, which is the precursor for Safe and Sound, he was the public defender. He was fully on board with it. He knew their clients would get arrested a lot more often, but it might help them not get arrested in the future or not go to prison. When we started Hope Probation, they got arrested every single time. But unlike the current public defender, he supported it because he knew he'd rather have his clients go to jail for three days or six days or ten days rather than five years in prison. So I hope he, he still keeps that attitude about it and rules, you know, in the right way. Fingers crossed. I just want to give you a glimmer of hope.
We have two questions from Webex.
Yes, um, your presentation was very nice. Thank you very much. There is a woman who has been sleeping on the sidewalks between Pa'akulani and on Lemon Road, across from ABC now for over a year. And I have seen the ambassadors walk right by her. Nobody approaches her. Um, do you think you might be able to encourage them to do something about that, please?
Definitely, yes. And, and I do want to kind of reiterate is that there, there is definitely this gray area of someone that is not committing a crime. And they are, um, again, they're not committing a crime and they're sort of, there's nothing you could do sometimes. So what we're trying to do with this ACT is really identify those severely mentally ill. And if they are severely mentally ill, and, and you know, I think there's this stat out there, a good vast majority of people that are sleeping on the street, that are homeless are severely mentally ill. So we're trying to use this program, work with IHS now. This IHS partnership started about a month ago. And with this IHS partnership, identify those people like you referred to and be able to get them that help. I think our aloha ambassadors are, they're, uh, trained in aloha, but they aren't mental health providers. They aren't those experts. So now that we have that expert in the district, every day, walking the district and be able to identify those people, uh, that is the hope. So definitely I'll, I'll make sure that everyone has my email after this, but if you again, want to send me that, that woman or send a picture even, then we'll make sure we get someone out there, uh, right away.
I just want to know if there's anything you can do if she refuses services.
Yeah, that's kind of the, that's the million dollar question right now. And I know every city in the country is dealing with this, every state in the country is dealing with this, is that if someone just wants to be homeless, right? They want to sleep on the beach or they want to sleep on the street and prosecutor Alm, I'd love for you to chime in, but yeah, that is a, a big.
If, if a person is a danger to themselves or others, the ACT position, uh, petition can be filed. So if somebody's sleeping in their own waste, that's enough. It, you know, and it's going to be more a danger to themselves. If sores all over, they can be approached. And in, in a number of cases, and they've been doing this downtown, as Trevor says, so they, they work with a lawyer and Dr. Koyanagi. And they've been very successful and often the person will agree to not have to go to court, not have the petition, but agree to take part in this program. And then they'll start getting the injections. It's a huge part of the Miami Project's success that if a person is in danger themselves or others, they can either be forced to be hospitalized or to take medication. Now, this is, you know, it's a tough issue with personal liberties and, you know, the ACU is not a fan of it. But you're not helping a person who's lying in their own waste to continue to do it. So I think that's exactly the kind of person, my guess is, who will be subject to this and, and could be in the ACT program.
We have one last question from the web.
I, I think, um, yes, um, I'd like to ask the question. Thank you for your presentation. Um, why did you include, um, Area Five in Waikiki? It is Malka of the canal and it is largely the area you, um, um, circumscribed is all park area or golf course. It doesn't really, I mean, yes, there are fringes of unhoused population there, but I don't think it's worth your energy or your time to try to go out there to try to get them. So I think that your, your resources would be better spent in Waikiki proper. That's my opinion. Thank you.
That's, that's a great point, Laura. I appreciate it. Um, so I showed a map that we show to all the, the tourists that come in and that wasn't mistaken by me. So our kind of district is sort of that island of Waikiki and it stops at the Alawai. And then it goes to, and it stops before the zoo. So that's where we focus our, our resources. That's where we focus our time and energy and that's where our ambassadors are. So the map that I showed was kind of just the broader area. So the map that I showed was kind of just the broader area. Well, good catch. I appreciate that. Next time I will not.
Rick, did you have a question?
I just wanted to respond to that. We have, through the years, looked not just at Waikiki proper, but the periphery, the area that borders Waikiki. Because one of the things we don't want to do is be accused of just pushing the homeless outside of Waikiki. If we'll just concentrate our efforts on Waikiki. And so it's been traditional that we cover these areas when we look at homeless count as well, even though, yes, the services that Trevor's talking about are going to be in Waikiki as opposed to in the areas that Laura is talking about, and even in the Palco Lani Park. One other thing I would like to add is, because it was before Trevor got here, but really, the Safe and Sound, and at the time, we were calling it Weed and Seed. The origin of this came from a visitor public safety conference, which Bob, of course, attended. And it was all of the visitor industry. The chair of that conference was Mupi Kanaman. And we had requested and worked very closely with Prosecutor Alm's office. We were encouraging him to bring that program to Waikiki. We ended up calling it Waikiki Safe and Sound for copyright reasons, I guess, something like that. And, but in any case, and that originally, that origin from Paul Kasasa, the Kasasa Foundation came out of that whole effort as a way of saying, hey, we're willing to put our money where our mouth is. And BID stepped forward to saying, okay, hey, we will coordinate the whole thing. And so it really was a major effort beyond just the BID. All of Waikiki was involved. And then, of course, Trevor just joined us, and I really appreciate how aggressive he's been in terms of being able to advance the program and be able to get the BID even more involved in the kind of services that are going to be there for Waikiki. The, you answered that question about the difference. WA is more of a kind of a policy organization. The BID is a service-related organization. In fact, WA created the BID. I was the first president of the BID. But hey, we're really happy to have Trevor on board and now support, again, of IHS. We did bring in IHS originally. We didn't have ongoing support, which now Trevor or the BID is going to provide. So we think the whole effort is being taken to another level. Support from the city, from the business associations. And we really appreciate the neighborhood board's involvement, neighborhood board's support as well.
Thank you, Trevor. We really want to, could you open up the side door if I've got anybody else who has specific questions?
I'm not going anywhere. So yeah, find me before you go, and I'll stay as long as you guys need, and please ask some sidebars. But again, yeah, I'll make sure that Bob and the whole team have, you guys have my contact, and please reach out. So thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have citizens' concerns for areas not covered on the agenda. Is there someone who has a concern? You came here tonight that has not been covered or will not be covered? Yes, ma'am, please use the microphone over here.
My name is Sally Mangliff-Mott. I am a resident of Waikiki. For approximately two and a half years, I was unfortunately awakened nearly every morning in my apartment as early as 2:30 a.m. by excruciatingly loud trash pickup noises by private refuse companies. I couldn't experience a healthy, regular sleep pattern because I never knew when the private refuse trucks would arrive with their quanging and banging and beeping noises. The pain from the disruptive noises is real and disheartening. I felt confused as to why such an operation was legal. I wrote emails to, about this issue to the city council members, including Council Chair Tommy Waters. No one responded to my pleas for help. I also attended the DUCs on Sunday rally held in Waikiki on August 6th. However, this is the first time that I am publicly testifying about this issue. Chair Waters has received over 20,000 words from the community about this issue. He also received a two-minute recording of the beeping, banging, and clanging of the activities of the private refuse companies, which can be characterized as sounds of abuse. Chair Waters' reluctance to support these impacted residents may be because he hasn't personally experienced the abuse. I would like to make a suggestion so that he can have a better understanding of what our community is experiencing. First, I would ask permission to have Chair Waters' home telephone number. Second, I would ask Chair Waters to allow me to call him at any time of my choosing between 2:30 a.m. and 6 a.m. every morning for one week. Third, I would ask Chair Waters to allow me to play via the telephone call the two-minute recording of the beeping, banging, and clanging of the sounds of abuse. If after one week period, he can justify and continue to support the actions of the private refuse company, he may then want to examine his personal dignity. However, if he already knows that he would not want to experience this for one week, then it's time not to be hypocritical and envy experience for others by expeditiously taking unnecessary measures to end the abuse. I would like to suggest that the board place this issue of early morning trash pickup on the agenda for next month's meeting and invite the owners of the private refuse companies and anyone else the board thinks appropriate. And I would hope the board will continue to use their voices to end the injustice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have.
Laura.
Okay, you're calling on me? Okay, thank you. I'd like to screen share for just a second, please.
Fine.
Okay. Okay, this is the resolution that you folks put out in 2016. And I just highlighted a few spaces, and it has to do with the proposal for pedestrian bicycle bridge over the Alaway Canal at University as a way to provide improved connectivity, okay? Second, down there a little bit, it says, "A special meeting of our Maoka side had 60% majority of those attending supported elimination use primarily bike and pedestrian bridge." What I'd like to say is, this, in fact, does not say that you approve of any tower or stay cable or concrete buttresses. It is, you have come along, this is much more aligned with both the Mo'eele'ee and the Diamond Head boards, which say that the design is not acceptable. We've come 50% over to say a small, a modest, narrow, low bridge is acceptable. Are you willing, and I know that your chairman did not want to rewrite any new regulation, but this is the regulation that you have or the resolution that you have now? And wouldn't it be in to your advantage to come along with us and say that a modest bridge would be acceptable? Because it looks like all three of the neighborhood boards would be pretty much in alignment with that. And I'd appreciate any kind of response that you might have that way. There was also regulations in 1977 that you folks put out, and that's probably, nobody's on the board now that also stated that also. So I'd like anything that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' concerns from the audience?
Chair Waters, I would like to make a motion regarding that citizen concern.
Could you wait until we get the audience done? Any other? John?
Really quick, along the lines of environmental design, which I feel is real important to help our community. We have these rental scooters. They're electric, I think. And part of their policy of this company, and I think they're one of these companies that come in and do their spiel here, and you guys approved it, you can dump off these scooters anywhere you want. So like, sometimes in the morning, I go bodyboarding, 6:00 in the morning. There's like 10 scooters on a sidewalk, on the street, in the bushes at our condo building and all that. So I think the board, whoever that company is, I don't know. They probably came here with the, you know, beautiful story of how great they are. They shouldn't be allowed to have a policy, company policy, that you can dump the scooters wherever you want. I think it's an extra fee, but it makes us look tacky. And it makes us look like Miami Beach that I fled from in horror. That's when things really start unraveling in Miami Beach, is when these rental contraption companies took over. And I'm starting to get really worried about it. Thanks.
Citizens' concerns. Okay, what was your?
So Chair Waters, I would like to make a motion to, since we had a big discussion last time also about the Alaway Bridge, I would like to add to the agenda or the upcoming agenda to have the Alaway Bridge be a discussion. Given the fact that the last time this board actually approved a resolution was in 2016, and the only members from that board in 2016 are three members. So the board itself has really changed. So I'd like to have the current board reflect the current design of the bridge, since that has changed greatly also.
I believe that once we put our name on a, and take a vote, it goes into the environmental impact statement and/or the environmental, the EA. Reversing our position, I don't believe is something we can do. I mean, going back and reconsidering it at any time. I don't think we can do that. I will take that up the channel. But I don't think, once we vote on something, whether it's a new building, whether it's anything, bringing it back up, I don't think is appropriate, but I'll be happy to consider it.
On that note, I support bringing it back up also. And I bring it back, I want to bring it back up because the citizens are concerned. Not so much what we voted for, well, I wasn't on the board in 2016, but what the board voted for then. It's important then what was voted on, but that was then, and this is now. And there's been a lot of discussion in between, and there's been a lot of claims of meetings and discussions that everybody was aware of. But, you know, if that was true, then I think everybody might be in a different place at this point. But clearly, there's concerns. There's a lot of articles being written. There's a lot of media coverage. And I think what we should do as a board, if we're going to be respectable to the, to the community, is to bring it back to the table. If we can do another resolution and clarify what our original resolution was or amend that resolution, then we should do that. But I think it's important because, you know, this big bridge or this modest bridge or no bridge, I think needs to be further discussed.
Thank you.
No, I hear what you're saying. And I don't necessarily disagree. I think you have competing kinds of procedural policies. I mean, it is true that once, because people come and they rely on a vote. So if we vote to support something, even though that's some years ago, it's a little tricky to come back later and say, well, now we've changed our minds. So you have that on the one hand. On the other hand, I think there's probably a lot of people like myself who may agree with you that, and I thought this was going to be a little teeny, weeny, itty-bitty footbridge, you know, and this thing looks like the Golden Gate Bridge, right? And so it's not exactly what I thought we were voting for. So I think in terms of what Sarah, our motion, I don't know that you can add it to the agenda necessarily because it's kind of a significant issue. I mean, I think, I mean, Judy may know better than I do, but I think that the Sunshine Law would say you can, if it's something minor, maybe you could add it, but if it's, but it wasn't on the agenda, I'm not sure you can add it. Yeah, you can put it on the agenda for next month if you want to do that, and that would be a legitimate, you know, thing to do. And then, and then either take a vote or see where the board is at that point. I'm just not sure you can add it for tonight, that's all.
I'm sorry, you are saying it perfectly. Thank you, Vice Chair. That's exactly what I would like to do. I would just like to add it to the agenda for the upcoming meeting to per discussion. That's it.
And if I could just add to that, that's all I was saying, too, to add it for the discussion next time. And one last comment. What was voted on in 2016, if anybody reads the resolution from 2016, which is available on the Neighborhood Board website, clearly, the amount of money that was voted for to be allocated at that time, I know that years have gone by, but not that many, was between $5 to $11 million. And now it's ballooned to $63 million. And it's, you know, at that point, I think it was discussed, it was believed to be a modest bridge, similar to the other bridges, all of the other bridges, not a 180-foot-tall tower with guy wires. So it's important to respect even that resolution and not say that we were voting as a board, because that's not my voice for this giant bridge for $63 million. That's not fair to the community, and that's not fair to me and the new board members going forward. Thank you.
There is a motion on the floor to add something to the agenda next month regarding the Alaway Bridge. Is there a second? Need discussion?
Chair?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, while I can appreciate that there are new members on the board, that doesn't necessarily mean that the people who were there and have gone to all the presentations, including the one that Ms. Ruby held recently, that doesn't mean that our voices have changed. It means that the people were representing their community, and we made a resolution. And it's like a little child who doesn't get their way. So if they stop their feet and hold their breath, we're going to get you to change your vote. I object to this, and I think it is ridiculous. There are granted numerous articles in the newspaper. I'm holding one, which I had hoped to bring to the meeting tonight, which actually states Alaway Bridge would be an asset. I think it's inappropriate to just say, well, I want to change my vote now. So I object to having it on the agenda. Thank you.
Could I clarify something? Catherine, we're not, I think the people that are asking to discuss this further, we're not objecting to your vote back in 2016. In fact, I respect it. It was mentioned that it was a $5 to $11 million bridge, and it was believed at that time, I think, when you guys met. We'll have to go back to the record and investigate further, but from what I've investigated, that it would be a modest bridge, similar to the bridges that are currently there. There's no other bridge like the one proposed there currently. So we're not saying, I'm not saying that I don't want a bridge. I'm just saying, just be clear on the money and the type of bridge.
Greg, allow me to interrupt you. I'm not saying.
I will allow you. Go ahead.
That you wouldn't, that you want a bridge or don't want a bridge. That is not the point. The point is that, let's say that you and Sarah decide that you want something on our board right now, and you bring it forward, and we vote on it, and five years from now, five years from now, some other board member comes up and says, I don't want that on my agenda now. No, there have been 11 separate meetings throughout the community over the years with extensive drawings. And it has, granted, because the time has passed, gone up in price. But what doesn't? A new car has gone up in price. That doesn't mean that we should change our vote or bring it up over, excuse me, over and over again just because somebody has made a big stink about it repeatedly.
No one's asking to change a vote. We're asking to just have a discussion. And if there is a second resolution that comes forward to properly define what this current board wants, then if it's allowed, and I believe it is, we'll have to go maybe to OIP or figure it out. I think that should be allowed. The board that's here, the board that's here here, excuse me if I could finish, Catherine.
Okay.
The board that's here, the board that's here now has the right to vote as the board that's here now on any motion or anything. So I think it's important to respect the current board. And I respect you, and I respect the previous boards, and that's all I'm saying.
I'll take a vote on this roll call. If you're in favor of the motion, it's yes. If you don't want the motion, it's no. If you don't want it on the agenda, it's no.
Okay, so this vote is motioned by Member Worth and seconded by Member Greg to put the, on the next agenda, November 2023, for the Waikiki Neighborhood Board, the Alaway subject of the bridge, correct? Okay, so in order for us to put it on the, on the agenda, we need, for next month, it needs a three-quarter vote, or two-thirds vote, I'm sorry, two-thirds vote, okay?
Could I make a point of clarification? It actually doesn't even need to be voted. If Sarah wanted it. It actually doesn't even need to be voted, if Sarah wanted it on the agenda-
It's a motion tonight.
I know, I realize that, but if she wanted it on the agenda, just so the board members know this, any board member can request to put something on agenda for a decision or for a vote, without even doing what we're doing right now, I just want to clarify that.
Okay, you gotta move along because we've got people to speak yet, so please take the vote.
Okay, so, Member Anderson. Um, Member Brown. Member Cabanero. Member Doldeal. Uh, Waikiki Erdecheck. Member Philet. Chair Finley. Member Henske.
No.
Member Jacob. Uh, Member Murs. Uh, Member Greg. Uh, Member Mark. Member Snyder. And Member Worth. So I have. Member Philet. So Member Philet, this is a vote to put abstain, okay, so this was, you are, you are abstaining to put the, put it, put the subject of the Alaway Bridge on November twenty twenty-three's agenda to discuss. You vote yes, okay. Okay, we have. We have nine yeses, five noes. That's not two-thirds.
I will consider putting it on a future agenda as well.
I think there were more than nine, I, I counted more than nine.
Two, so I have, Member Anderson, Member Brown, Member Doldeal, Waikiki Erdecheck, Member Philet, Member, uh, Jacob, Member Mark, Member Snyder, and Member Worth, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
So just point, uh, I think, correction, uh, you need two, two-thirds if you already vote, if you're going to change the agenda night of the meeting, that is not required to add it to the upcoming meeting.
No, the neighborhood plan can actually propose a topic to put, be put on the next agenda, it can be, it can be voted on, so you can do that, it doesn't have to be, if it, if it passes, then it's something that, um, Chair Finley will be required to put it on the agenda, so if it does not pass, then he has the option to put it on the agenda or not put it on the agenda.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm missing-
We're gonna move along now, we've got, we're-
I think you should allow Sarah to, because I have concerns with what's going on right now too.
So, it's not two-thirds vote, and it's just nine, it just has to be majority versus supermajority, I think that's-
We'll clarify this, thank you.
You're, you're saying you only need nine, majority of the board, saying that two-thirds only applies to, to, to tonight, is that true?
What it says for the neighborhood plan, two-thirds vote is twelve, a quorum is nine, quorum meaning if you're voting for something, but if you want to put something on the agenda, it, okay, Member Worth, yeah, we can discuss it later, but it's twelve.
Let's move on, Nola, you've been waiting all night, we're gonna put you in.
Good evening, Chair Finley, can everybody hear me? Good evening, members of the board, uh, thank you for having me, I'm Nola Miyazaki, the Director of Human Resource Department, representing Mayor Blangiardi, um, I just, I'll try to move it along and be brief, um, just a couple highlights from the mayor's newsletter, which you can find at oneohahu.org/newsletter, but, um, I know that the subject of the ACLU lawsuit has come up, um, which seeks to prohibit the city from enforcing public welfare laws, um, they want, would like to take the city's ability away to enforce laws to protect and safeguard the public in, uh, with respect to the homeless, um, but the city does disagree with ACLU lawsuit, um, the mayor's message is that homeless is really, homelessness is a complex and pressing issue that affects us all, so he would like to share everyone that the city is committed to addressing the issue with compassion, empathy, and will focus on finding long-term solutions, so you can find a longer version of his message in, in this month's newsletter. Again, we're really pleased, um, to be partnering with Prosecutor's Office and everyone else on the Safe and Sound Initiative, what's one-year anniversary, it's on September fifth, and, uh, so Council Chair Waters and other community, um, organizations, um, we're pleased to have made such progress, and I was going to give you some statistics, but I think I'll skip that, because you can go to the newsletter, I think we, we've talked a lot about it already, but I think it has been, in terms of the data that's produced and the, um, the numbers, it's very successful so far, so hopefully it'll keep going and get better. Last time, the last month's meeting, there was a, someone brought up the parking meter, so we did announce, um, there has been upgrade to the parking meters, um, they're, they're 4G connected, um, they allow users to pay for parking safely, securely, using different kinds of pay method, I think such as Apple Pay and such, um, and there is a initiative to, to convert all of the coin-only meters to upgrade it to the new systems as well, and I think this is really for convenience for the public as well as, um, enabling the city to be able to actually collect on some of the, um, the parking violations when people don't really pay. Okay, so just a couple, um, just to respond quickly to some of the issues that were brought up last month, um, the fountain repair, so I don't think this has actually been brought up at the meeting, but it's been, um, Mr. Resident Bakuchi has emailed me directly, so apparently there's a water fountain on Alaway, we repaired it once, and we repaired it within a week of when he reported that it had been broken, and that runners and walkers are not able to use it, unfortunately, um, the water fountain, uh, due to vandalism, has been broken again, it's the one, it's the one on Alaway between Lures and Kaiolu Street, um, so the, there has been another work order put in by the Department of Parks and Recreation who will repair it, so as soon as they can get to it, it may take a little bit longer this time, last time, it kind of gave it the urgent, we needed it right away, and so it got done, but right now it's in the queue, so, um, Chair Finley, if you, if he asks you about that, if you can let him know. The foot patrol, I mean, it was requested or suggested that we have more foot patrol in Waikiki, uh, I guess Resident Winsec reiterated the need, and I think, uh, HPD District says, District Six has currently six officers and a supervisor assigned to foot patrol in Waikiki, the number of officers will depend on their availability staffing, um, they also have three additional officers assigned to patrol on bicycles, and four officers on all-terrain vehicles, so when staffing does allow, the numbers of officers available on foot patrol is increased, so as you all know, we are having a staffing issue at HPD, especially with uniformed officers, so that's driving the availability of, of people on foot patrol. So, the, the topic of the bridge, so I'll really just quickly say that, um, DTS has asked everyone if they would like to comment, to email Peter Garino, and that email address is peter.garino, G-A-R-I-N-O, at honolulu.gov, and if you go to honolulu.gov/completestreets/ allapono, A-L-L, A-L-A-P-O-N-O, and I've said this to Judy to put in the minutes and also on the website, um, you can, you can find the updates for the bridge project, and I know it's a topic that Roger Morton has had to entertain quite a bit, he, they're still in the planning stages, they're still open to feedback from residents, so if you email Peter, you, you will be, your, your comments will be heard. Um, okay, the last, um, issues were the repainting, from Ryan, Ryan Ozawa, please repaint a faded crosswalk on Kone Kapolei and the Alaway, so I'm not exactly sure, but there were two different responses, I guess this area covers two departments, um, DTS complete, did an investigation, um, of the intersection and a site inspection, and they confirmed that the crosswalk on Kone Kapolei Street is faded, and a work order will be issued to DFM to repaint the crosswalk markings, um, so that, and then DFM also responded, and they said they have initiated their service request for the faded crosswalk to be repainted, and they said the work will be completed by the end of the year. Um, and the last thing, there was, uh, I think from last week, there was a suggestion to make a whole card app, and I had passed this on to DTS, so I'm sure that at some point in the future, they will, they plan to do that. Thank you.
Questions for the mayor, Greg.
Aloha, Nola, how are you? I had a call into your office, um, a few weeks ago, I was told a couple times I'd get a callback, but I never did, I, it was ironic, it was the week that there was an article about a feral chicken program where, uh, the, the city had paid some money into a program to catch feral chickens, you could call in and, you know, catch them, and, uh, you know, I was concerned about what would happen to them, because ironically, that particular week and that, that day that I was concerned when I read the article, I, I had just actually saved a rooster that had been shot with, um, a pellet gun in the back of my building where I live, and I spent two days of my life, uh, with that rooster, getting him, this might, might be funny to, to some people, but it was injured, and I had a resident in my building in tears, watching this rooster on private property that I had to get access to, which I did, it's the, um, the old Tony Roma's, so I, it took me half a day to get access to that, um, and long story short, without, because we don't have a lot of time, uh, I was able to get vet assistance to the rooster, he did have some pellets in him, you know, he was shot, and there was a surgery, I, we had another vet do a surgery, I was able to get that rooster over to a, a rehab location, so someone is taking care of him, and he's recovering, I'll tell more about the story another day when we have more time, but my concern is that I found out that those feral chickens are going to be euthanized, all of them, so whether you dropped one off at the location, or they, you paid for the, um, the cage or whatever to catch them, once they're taken to the, um, the pest company, they're all euthanized, and I know in other states, they, you know, do releases on farms and, you know, there's other options, I'm an animal advocate, I'm deeply disturbed by that, in the future, I would respect that if I do call your office with the concern, which is the concern that I shared with your staff, that I would get a callback, so if you could make a comment on that, and hopefully we can get to a better place.
Was that to my office? I guess we-
Yes.
-get the message that it was about a feral chicken, I'm not really sure, I don't think that, I, I, I guess someone had, I thought someone had returned your call and addressed whatever the issues were, but we can definitely create, you know, a, a dart about, about the feral chicken, um, I mean, I know that there is, um, there are a lot of complaints, because I used to run Customer Services Department, Department, there are a lot of complaints about feral chickens and the explosion and the increase in feral chickens that people don't want, so, you know, for, although, you know, I, I, I respect your, I understand, I respect your, 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 um, your perspective, we, we get a tremendous amount of complaints about keeping the population down and getting them off public property, we don't do anything with feral chickens or feral cats on private property, but we do have, by law, we are obligated to control feral animals on public property, but that's under another department, but we can definitely put that dart in for you.
Thank you, this program is actually public-private, so private citizens can call, my concern isn't so much that, you know, I, I'm concerned too, if there's too many wildlife running around, and, you know, they're going to get injured too in streets and things, it's just the fact that there's no mention that they would be euthanized, and, and I, I'm disturbed that they're going to be euthanized, so can't we do something a little bit more humane, um, to address that? I would appreciate that you look into that, and, and-
We'll definitely get back-
Thank you, appreciate it.
First of all, I am very jealous of how clearly and how slowly you speak, so, that's my theme for tonight, um, and also, I really appreciate that you come back every month and answer questions that we have, so, I have some homework for you, if you wouldn't mind, um, I noticed that, um, that they're short NAs, Neighborhood Assistance, um, like, poor Ms. Judy Anne actually has to, instead of covering just four boards, right now she has to cover six, because they're so short-staffed, so I was hoping maybe that could be addressed, and, um, so far, I'm not seeing a lot of advertisement to fill these roles, like, I wish we would actually, um, inform at every board meeting, because we have thirty-three neighborhood boards, if we could maybe present that, um, that they are hiring and they're in dire need of, uh, neighborhood assistance, and as second, um, also, there are still vacancies on the neighborhood commission, and as you know, it's the mayor who, um, suggests a person, so I was hoping that he could please fill those spots as soon as possible, because I have been attending their meetings, and meeting forum, of course, is always an issue, so that would be great if he, uh, could make some time, thank you so much.
Sure, absolutely.
Questions for the mayor. Well, thank you so much. Did, uh, is, uh, Catherine pressure here? Catherine? Okay, the board has been discussing sixteen fifteen Alaway Boulevard, a building that the city has condemned, and this is the first update we've had about what the city intends to do.
Hi, good evening, everyone, um, I'll keep my comments brief, I just wanted to provide an update on sixteen fifteen Alaway, so after two very long years, we are almost at the end of the condemnation lawsuit, the attorneys have negotiated a settlement agreement, I think they're circulating that for signatures, money's going through the court, but the city will own sixteen fifteen Alaway soon, once it owns it, the plan is to put together an RFP, a Request for Proposals, and what the city's going to do is look for a development partner, will enter into a long-term lease with that development partner, um, and the developer is going to be the one that's responsible for the project, um, as part of the RFP, the city has been commissioning a feasibility study to look at, you know, what is, what is the relative cost and feasibility of, you know, either renovating the existing building or knocking it down, we'll give that feasibility study to the developer, and ultimately, they will be able to choose in their proposal which development method they want to select, and then the city can use, you know, they, they can select the, the appropriate proposal. Since we're putting together that RFP, what I wanted to do tonight was actually listen to you, listen to the community about, you know, what your interests are in this property, what you want it to look like, and then we can build that into the RFP, as this is kind of the, the flavor and the temperature of the community, um, so that the developers hopefully can be responsive to it, so I'm, I'm really here tonight to listen to you.
Yep.
Good news, thanks for the update, it's been a long time coming, so we're good, we're happy to hear that, it's in my neighborhood, um, I guess this is a separate TMK, it's a parcel, um, and you said the city's going to own it, then, um, I know the community and, and me is going to be curious what zoning, your height limit, FAR, that whole thing, because currently it's a two-story building, um, I don't know what the height limit is, but I, I think the community's going to know, um, what that height limit is, especially in the, the watermark next door, uh, and I think they are not required to provide any parking, which I appreciate, um, but I'll be curious what the RFPs, um, what they produce, if it's city-owned and, and it's designated for workforce housing, um, I'm inclined to say let's, let's get that maxed out, unless it's like a fifteen-story structure, but, but let's max out that zoning, we need housing, um, it's walkable, it's dense, it lends itself to not just a single-family residence or even a two-story, so whatever they can do to maximize the return on it, if it's for workforce housing, I think it certainly focuses my district, and we really appreciate that this is finally done, it's been a complete eyesore, it's, it's incredible.
We commit, we procured a lab paper to go last week, so hopefully it's less of an eyesore, but definitely opportunity.
No, appreciate the update, thank you.
Oh, and just, um, one comment, the funding that's being used by the city to acquire it, um, one of the requirements is that the units be sixty percent AMI for sixty years.
Any other questions on this property? This has been kicking around for a long time, a second, and I'm really happy to see the city is starting to move forward, take it.
Thank you, I'm really glad-
I'm really glad to, uh, see this property being, uh, hopefully developed into something useful. I'd totally like to echo, uh, Jeff's comments there that let's max out the housing that we can build there. Affordable housing, transitional housing, help get homeless people off the streets, I think would be great. Although I'll be a bit more radical than him. Let's get, if we can get rid of the height limit, build the thing up to heaven for all I care. We need housing in Waikiki. We need to bring in affordability. So please, let's build more housing for people. Thank you.
Member Henske. Catherine?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you for your report. I was one of the people that brought this forward, Alison Schafers and myself. She did an article on this building. And we did have a group of concerned citizens come to see us a couple of years back because they were worried about it becoming a homeless shelter. And I wanted to reassure the community that that isn't going to happen there. That was not the reason we had hoped that this building would be rebuilt and revitalized. Um, also, there has been a lot of, um, graffiti and people breaking into the fences that the city has posted already. And I don't know if you need a police presence there or what you need to prevent any more vandalism and people getting back on the property. But I encourage you to work with us and do it quickly. And let's get something that the community can agree on and it will be beneficial. Thank you.
And to confirm, the affordable housing money is for you, is not homeless money. So confirming that it is going to be an affordable housing budget.
Is it my turn? Hi, I'm just wondering, how much did we pay, end up paying for it?
Uh, it's going to be three point eight million dollars.
How much?
Three point eight million dollars.
Okay. Because we, I, I think that there was just an article in Civil Beat to the building that we support, that the Waikiki Board supported on Ena Road, that said it was habitable. And they were using for, um, affordable housing. They've had to move people out of the building. And Tommy Waters was blamed for it, but they said that the reason, he said that the reason that he supported the purchase, which seemed pretty incredibly high to me, also the Tokai Building on Kapialani, was because the neighborhood board of Waikiki supported it. So we have to be really careful on, you know, what we're paying and what we're doing. And some of the affordable housing, even in the new projects, are not selling because the pricing is just too high. We need truly affordable housing, but I'm thrilled that you're going to take care of that building because it is an eyesore.
Can I go next?
Go ahead, Laura.
Okay. Yeah, I would just like to say that, um, it's workforce housing that should be rentals and it should be, follow the model of the Marin Tower in downtown Chinatown. That's the, that's the optimum model that you should be following. All of this percentages of AMI and all of that is not really understood by most of us. But if you go to something that's already there and it will say the rental at floor, second floor is a thousand dollars a month, and if a rental at the fifteenth floor is a hundred and fifty, you know, fifteen hundred a month or whatever, that sort of thing, that's clear, that's understandable, that's workforce housing, and I would hope that you would do it that way, rentals especially. Thank you.
Confirming that the, um, the funding source that we use to acquire it does require six years of rental helping.
Any other questions? Craig, but-
Uh, yes, I, I had heard, maybe I misheard, that the building was taken over without having to pay for it, like it was like eminent domain or some issue where the owner wasn't paying taxes or paying something, or I don't, I don't know, I heard a story about something and then a certain amount was offered and then it didn't work out. But this three point eight million dollar number was never something I had heard before.
Yeah, so I think originally when the condemnation suit was filed, uh, I think the appraisal that the city acquired to support the condemnation was at three million. Um, the appraisals, uh, there was, there was a differential in appraisal value between what the seller had and what the city had. And so through the settlement agreement, they're agreeing to three point eight million dollars, which both appraisers agree is a fair market value of the property.
Okay, so this, the seller is getting that money that goes to the seller.
The seller will get three point eight, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for waiting so long tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your input. We'll incorporate it into the RFP. Have a good night.
Does Councilmember Waters have a representative? Yes.
Thank you, La Fisher with Chair Waters' office. Let me put in. Chair Waters is actually, um, not with us, he's actually in Korea, um, for the system program. Um, this, I'm going to keep our, our, um, report brief. A new beach shower with three timed shower heads, one foot wash station, new concrete pad, opened to the public this past Monday, October ninth, at Imano Beach. Chair Waters in our office has received multiple comments and concerns about not being informed with the short notice of the blessing of the Imano Beach showers this past Monday. The Department of Parks and Recreation properly opened and gave advance notice to the area neighborhood boards and this surrounding community. The Department of Facility Maintenance, project manager of the project, there are also bonding issues that was pointed out during the final inspection. They're working to go ahead and address that as well. Current issue, the outer edge, so the previous pavers are installed, they're, I think to go ahead and drain the water, however, they're working to see, um, what the limitations are and how we can go ahead and rectify that. Follow-up, Department of Facility Maintenance checking with manufacturers and local reps to the previous pavers, verify that they are performing as intended and advanced. With regard to the private trash haulers, the managing director is currently working on meeting with private haulers to discuss the trash pickup. That's our report. Anything for any questions?
Questions for Rep, for Councilmember Waters? Seeing none, thank you very much.
How much did the shower cost? I had my hand up.
I apologize. I don't have the actual amount, but I can go ahead and research and get it back to you, Chair Finley.
And I think there's a leak too, where there used to be a tap.
Margaret, next time you have to actually adjust the chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If he'll call on me when I raise my hand.
Aloha, board members and, pardon. Um, I'm going to keep mine brief as well because the hour is late. You have my report. I just want to highlight three things. One, switching gears to sea level rise for Waikiki, we're a coastal community. And we have started a project, uh, that was funded by the state to do planning. So we have a lot of science at the university on sea level rise, uh, on climate change and, uh, what would happen when we're underwater. Uh, and we wanted to bring that science to the community and have the community look forward and see what can we do today for, for planning for tomorrow. And, and I know that Michael Brown, Effer Mertz, and also Catherine, uh, have been to the university with the School of Architecture, uh, looking at, they're planning forward with the students, but there's also science. There's water assumptions, uh, there's also socio-ecological considerations. All of this has been in the planning stages of getting enough information to bring to the community. So in my report, uh, the, um, the, um, community outreach, uh, and some engagement of the community about what this project is, is now, uh, being launched on October twenty-third from five thirty to seven here at the Waikiki Community Center. They do have the website link, but I got that a little too late for this. But if you get my, my newsletter, I will be putting some of that information in my newsletter this coming weekend, uh, with the actual, um, email address or the link to get to, uh, the information. But I really encourage all of you to attend that community session. Uh, and we are inviting the entire, um, businesses as hotels, as well as residents, because I think this is a community and how we work together is really important. So I encourage that. The, uh, the second thing I, we've talked about safe and sound, uh, that, I just want to give kudos to the HPD community policing team. They do, and, and some of you are with the, um, community policing neighborhood watch. I encourage people to do that as well and get to know your, your neighborhood. Uh, and, and so they have all kinds of special assignments. So they have cut down their walking to Thursdays. And, uh, it's, it's at, I think this week it's at Eaton Square and Alawai Small Boat Harbor. So, um, again, my newsletter kind of gives a contact, which is, uh, Officer Ryan Yamamoto, who, um, who coordinates the information that comes out. Again, being part of the community, I know John and, and now we've got WBID, um, really moving into bringing community together. And it really is community as well as the, the agency. So I encourage that as well. And I will bring up a third issue that has been talked about, the trash, trash collection. Um, you know, there's been so much in terms of the, the legislation that's been proposed and we've gotten only so far. I really think that bringing the private trash companies together with the problems of, of the residents themselves. And I'm going to just share with you, I did have a meeting with the two remaining private trash companies. They have workforce shortage as, as every single business and, um, um, healthcare providers have workforce shortage. And so what they've been doing is having a turnover. We lost one company, there were only three. One company couldn't do it, um, and so they dissolved and I think they were bought out and I think it's now under Honolulu, um, Honolulu Deposit-
Disposal Services.
Disposal Service and West Oahu Aggregate. Those are the only two companies left. And they, they've serviced everybody who the city doesn't provide services for. So in talking to both of them, they really are trying hard. Um, they are looking at rooting, they're looking at dispatching. Uh, West Oahu Aggregate has even bought, um, what they call swishers. So instead of the beeping sound, they're swishing in, in the direction of where a person is walking in back of them. So, you know, they've made a lot of effort in terms of addressing some of these problems. The other thing that, um, that they're looking at is working with each association. So you have to realize the private companies are contracted by the association. So everyone is different depending on what building you, you are in. Uh, and they have been working with each one of their, their, um, buildings. And so, so for example, in Wailana, uh, it was a real problem because of the exit and egress and egress and egress to that building. And so working with the building manager, they have developed this roof that will not have all this noise around the whole neighborhood, but it's just going into and out of, uh, that building, which, uh, they're working on now, uh, as a way of preventing the noise as much as possible. So I would encourage, um, you to work with the companies. Um, I guess, uh, Councilmember Waters' staff said that the managing director is going to call them together. I think that, that, uh, in talking with them, they're very open, they, they're very responsive. Uh, they have had problems in terms of staffing, but they are looking at rooting, dispatching and retraining some of the new people they have. So if in fact, as Sally has, you know, indicated, if we know the building, I think we have to go one by one as to who has a contract with whom. And so there's only the, now that the yellow trucks, which is West Oahu Aggregate, and the green trucks, the Honolulu disposal. So, so I encourage the community and individual buildings working together with the, um, trash companies because legislation won't do it. I think it really is taking responsibility on both the parts of the, the agency, private agencies, the condo association, or your apartment building manager, and, and all of us. They did mention one thing and, and I do want to encourage again, all of us working together, is that people have complained about the, the noise of the throwing of cans and whatever it is into the trash bin, as well as all of the debris flying around in the wind. And they, they would really, and they've told building managers, is they would really encourage people to bag their trash. If you bag your trash and it comes from ten feet above, I'm just repeating what they tell me, ten feet above, into the trash bin, it'll make noise with bottles and cans. So if they're in a trash bag and they drop, it's going to be a lighter drop or a less sound, not soundless, but less sound. And the other is when the wind blows and there's, there's all kinds of trash, literally, you know, without being bagged, it will fly and it will, and, and the trash collection driver can't be picking up all the trash. So again, all of us, I encourage all of us working together as a community, rather than saying, hey, do this or do that. And, and so I'm very open to working with them and you, uh, because I've talked with both companies and they are both willing to work with the community or with the, the AOAOs of, of the various buildings. So again, working together, we can get things done in a more amicable, respectful way that we all live together. So that's all I have. I answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Senator, now go ahead, Craig.
Thank you. I know we have short time, so I'll, I'll just make a comment about the earlier issue. I don't know if you were here, Senator, when I, um, mentioned to Prosecutor Olm, uh, who I think has gone now. Uh, there's an article today in Civil Beat, if you've read it, about condo, a condo association where there was embezzlement of over three hundred thousand dollars. So if you haven't read it yet, I would, um, advise you to, you know, take a look at the feed. And I'll circle back to you at some point because you know I'm working heavily on condo, um, issues and misconduct and trying to get an ombudsman. But it's very concerning. It's with Hawaiian properties, it's confirmed, Hawaiian properties admitted it. So I'm, I'm speaking on fact, you know, that that's something they've, they've agreed that they've done. Uh, there's a couple of people that they know are involved, but there's no details yet. And it was a referral supposedly to Prosecutor Olm's office. So I just ask that you take a look at that. I don't, I don't want you to have to comment this evening, but I know you are concerned about those issues.
Okay. And again, you know, that task force that was formed by, um, by the legislature this past session, I think it has been formed. So those kinds of issues should really be addressed at that so that there are ways in which we can prevent or at least be able to, uh, to follow up when things like that happen.
Yeah, on, on that note, I will make one comment. My concern is the chair of that, commit that task force, but that's something we can discuss offline, that the person that's chairing is actually someone who constantly litigates against, um, owners for foreclosures quite a bit.
I don't, I don't know the details.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk more. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Representative Tam? And we are officially out of time, so, um-
Good evening, everyone. I'll make my report quick. Thank you so much for everyone that came out to our community town hall. Um, it kind of reaffirms what the basic issues are for the district, which is noise, condo issues, and safety and homelessness. I did get a question or comment actually from several constituents about towing on Monday, this one along the Alawai. Just want to let everyone know that, um, it was a federal holiday, but not a state and city holiday, so therefore, um, you weren't allowed to park along the Alawai on Monday and city services were operational that day. So, um, now I open up to any questions that you have for me.
Since Representative Tam? Or none?
Thank you.
You know? From the governor's office? From the governor's office?
I've got like one minute left, so I'll make this real brief. Aloha, I'm the deputy director of Department of Law Enforcement, that's my area, I apologize. Wasn't here last, last month. Our, my task was, with our team, was to augment the staffing levels up in Maui over the last two months, so we had large staffs up there, with all our state, federal, military assets, augmenting their staffing levels, and just to let you folks know, it's very touching. Police and fire department also, they respond to all kinds of, but we do forget sometimes that they have to go home to their families, and that's, that's one of the initiatives that was asked of our department, of the governor's office, and Department of Law Enforcement, to augment Maui Police Department's staffing levels, also the military guards that was a standing post to protect the edges of Lahaina Town. So I just wanted to make that really, really brief. I have the newsletter back there from the governor's office, any questions?
Questions for the governor?
Yes, sir. Thank you for attending, I'll keep it brief. So over the past week, weekend, we've seen a horrific terrorist attack over in Israel, and it was perpetrated by a group that has alleged to have cells around the world that was, and that could possibly impact Hawaii. I understand that in partnership with DHS, Hawaii has a Hawaii Fusion Center, and we've got, I know we've got the Pride Parade coming up, has there been any change in the threat assessment for Hawaii from HFC, and is, is the state confident that we'll be able to have a safe and free Pride Parade coming up? Thank you.
Well, that's a good question. Actually, under the new Department of Law Enforcement, really quick, in January twenty-four, based on Act two seventy-eight legislative body, Department of Law Enforcement, we are gonna have the Hawaii Fusion Center, Department of Homeland Security, the Sheriff's Department, Attorney General Investigators, Sheriff's Department, and so our assets gonna jump up. But regarding your question under the region nine, I include China, in that area in Taiwan, we're watching very, very closely at what's happening. So we do have meetings, Hyda meetings with our military and state, federal, and law enforcement entities to protect the best inches of Hawaii and beyond. Thanks for that question. Anybody else?
Anything else for the governor? Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We are out of time, I'll give you one minute.
Thank you, I'll be very brief, two things. One, we're working with the city on the ACLU case that was discussed earlier, it would be really disastrous for Waikiki, I think if that ACLU was successful and being able to prevent the city's programs from continuing. And then the other thing I was, I wanted to mention, I wanted to thank Senator Moriwaki and Representative Tam, because they also provided money to DLNR to do a small-scale sander replenishment to the area that we're looking at right now, if you're, if you have noticed, if you've been in the area, is that area immediately diamondhead of Fort Jerusie, that area is severely eroded, the city access is actually collapsed, so the sidewalk, city has leads to the beach there, has fallen apart already, and so really, there's, the access now is very dangerous. So we're hoping to be able to get a sander replenishment operation done in the area. It'll be very small scale with a hand-operated pump, the idea to put up enough sand there, and hopefully, we'll be able to retain the sand in the area, which will then be able to open up that public access again. I expect the city to close that access at any time because it's very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Folks, we have exceeded our time tonight again, we'll pick up where we left off at the next meeting. I'm confused, I got a, and it's tonight, I have not had a chance to read them, I did read the ones that came out online. Out of time, we're gonna have to end the meeting. When we put the chairs away, push them against the wall, just straight down the wall, don't stack them up high. Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.